The only one. Well, let's go ahead and call the Sandy City Council work session to order. And Jeff, will you go ahead and call the role?
Yes, Councilor Beetzold.
Here.
Councilor Smallwood.
Yep, here.
Councilor Sheldon.
Here.
Councilor Walker.
I know she's here. She's sitting. She's here.
There she is. Uh, Councilor Exner.
I am here.
Councilor Hockenson.
Here.
Mayor Pulliam.
Here. So you know, Councilor Walker, we went ahead and counted you present here. Um, with, uh, so I'll start off with a quick review of tonight's Sandy City Council meeting. Uh, first of all, will there be any proposed changes for the agenda tonight? All right.
Mayor, sorry, I'm slow.
No problem.
Consent agenda is the herbicide treatment.
Yep.
And I'm looking at that going, why is that a council item, agenda item? Why isn't that not just a uh, a city manager policy? Cause it only applies to employees.
And I think that's probably why it's on the consent agenda, but Jordan, uh, you want to go ahead and address that?
Uh, I kind of intend to agree. I think in this case, we, there was a little more politics involved, right? Kind of elevated to the level of the parks board was reviewing it. There was interest from, um, you know, obviously the, the members of the parks advisory board, and then the council lays on. So in this case, you know, I think we just took the discretion to put in front of the council. Um, you know, and we did review it, um, or send it around previously with the council to see if there was any input on it or reactions. Um, these things can kind of be touchy just because of, you know, dealing with how we maintain our parks, um, the approach that we take. And nobody, but I do appreciate with sort of that, that comment and, you know, it does, does appear to be a little more administrative in this case. I think we're just, you know, kind of stepping over into more of the policy council, uh, than administrative, um, you know, gray line there. Um, but that, that is kind of why we felt like consent was okay. Um, and we had shopped it around already too. There is in, just on this theme while we're talking about it, I believe with personnel policies, there actually is in our charter for the council to approve that, which, you know, cities have different rules on that. Um, so I think in a future agenda, uh, in a couple of months, we'll have an update of our personnel, uh, manual. So there is some cases where the council does have, um, authority on, on the policies.
Okay. Any other conversation on possible proposed changes to tonight's agenda? Okay, great. Um, so that's a good headway and well, actually it's not. Um, so we have presentation on our wastewater improvements, detailed discharge alternatives evaluation. Any, um, any questions or comments for staff before we do that tonight? All right. So then that gets to that consent agenda. We have the city council, uh, meeting minutes for March 15th, as well as the policy for the pesticide use in city parks. Any questions or comments before we do that tonight? Okay. And then under old, uh, business, uh, we had the wastewater rate model update. Then the full faith and credit obligation series 2021. And then, uh, resolution 2021 dash oh five authorizing the loan, uh, from clean waters, uh, state revolving loan fund. Okay. Uh, from there we'll go into our new business advisory bodies, governance and structure. And then, uh, B city USA discussion, uh, with Councilor Exner. All right. Uh, from there we'll go to our report from the city manager and then committee council reports. And then we'll, uh, wrap up, uh, the meeting for the evening. With that, uh, let's get to our city council work session on our homelessness task force. Um, Jordan, you provide us a short staff report for our conversation.
Yeah, I'll kick us off. Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, so we've, this was one of the council priorities. It was a city council goal coming out of your, your goal setting. Um, I think it was one of the higher priorities to start this conversation, um, now and, and started early. And really tonight, we wanted to start that conversation with you by sort of defining the problem. And scoping out sort of the work of this task force and what this task force might look like, who are the partners that would be involved? How the council wants to kind of form, uh, this group and carry out this goal to, to come up with a plan, um, for addressing this, uh, you know, important issue. So, um, we've, we've left it pretty open ended, sort of the conversation. Um, I wanted to introduce, um, a couple of folks that we've invited, uh, to this meeting, um, to help answer questions and kind of generate some of these ideas. Um, I think we all recognize that an hour is not going to be enough, uh, but this will get the conversation started. Um, and maybe give us enough direction to start the task force and start the ball rolling, uh, for future work sessions. But first I'll, I'll like to introduce, um, the Clackamas County Deputy District Attorney, Bill Stewart, um, who's here tonight. Um, Emily Mattesar from, uh, Barry Ellsner and Hammond, um, who can, uh, answer questions about sort of what is the current, you know, legal, um, issues and, um, loss, uh, out there around this issue. Chief Roberts, uh, is here tonight. He, he'll probably, I think he'll do a, an extend the introduction and kind of talk a little bit about the current situation of homeless in Sandy. Uh, we've talked about this before, so we don't want to spend too much time. I think you guys are, are aware of, uh, the issue and, and sort of what we're dealing with. Then I've also invited, uh, Maggie Gilman Holm, who is the project coordinator for the social services task force. And, and their work and, and coming up with a social services master plan. So she's graciously, uh, agreed to attend as well. Um, if there's any questions about, um, that task forces work and how it may intersect or, you know, sort of partner with, uh, this task force. Um, and I think there's some ideas there for how those two groups can work together, uh, to address this issue. There's a lot to talk about. There's a lot of different ways to go about this. Obviously, um, we're not, like I said, we're not trying to solve the problem tonight, but, um, start thinking about how we can, uh, work together to, to, to address this. And, um, I think coming out of this, there's probably going to be, uh, a lot of ideas and both looking at the short term, things that we can do in terms of codes and working with our community-based organizations and, and other agency partners. Um, and then also long-term stuff that are more, you know, looking at the holistic, how do we, you know, help those are less, you know, less fortunate in Sandy and, and get the folks off the street and the services they need. Wanted to then, uh, go ahead and hand it over to the chief. I think he's going to, uh, do a little more introduction with, um, uh, Deputy District Attorney, uh, Bill Stewart. And then, uh, talk of just a little brief about the existing situation in Sandy, um, and, uh, kind of the numbers and, uh, what our, our police force, uh, kind of are dealing with. I, you know, as part of this plan, uh, and chief will probably go into this. You know, the police are often the first ones that are called, right? They're the ones that really are the, the first responders. A lot of times the homeless are in crisis or they're getting a, you know, a call comes in because, uh, something, you know, welfare check, someone's in distress. But ultimately, you know, part of this model I think is looking at how do we approach this differently and in a better way to, to get folks help that they need and getting off the street. So I know he's interested in where this goes, um, and how we, uh, look at, um, uh, this issue. But, uh, yeah, I'll go ahead and, and turn it over to you, chief.
Thank you, Jordan. Um, good evening, Mayor, Council, and then everybody else that's been, uh, that's here tonight. I appreciate you taking the time. I know that, uh, Maggie and Bill and Emily and everybody else is extremely busy. Everybody's got things to do. Our schedules are full, but thank you very much for being here. Once I get, um, uh, I'm going to talk about a few things, then I will hand it over to, uh, Bill Stewart, and he has a short presentation as well, so, uh, about some programs that, uh, they've been working on, uh, in Oregon city and some other areas that seem to be, um, pretty successful so far. It's pretty exciting, some of the new things. Uh, as Jordan touched on, um, yeah, for many years and, uh, since I got started in this, in this, uh, profession, we, um, we have been, uh, dealing with this problem, which has grown. We all know that it's grown. I think in Sandy, we've been fortunate to, um, because of the size of our community and some other factors have been able to kind of stay on top of this. But that doesn't mean by any means that it's, it's not an issue and a problem that we need to focus on. I had the numbers from, um, I think it was 2019 with the, the county did not do a count as far as I know, and, and because of the COVID-19 pandemic. So I think those numbers are a bit, um, off a little bit anyway. So, and I don't really see any need for us to go into them there. I think most of you have heard, uh, the last count was, uh, you know, right around 50 plus in our zip code. And that included folks that were, um, that were, um, not necessarily living on the streets, but they did not have a home and maybe even staying with friends and things of that nature. So that included those. So, um, and I'm sure those numbers have changed a little bit. They, uh, it would be my guess that they've grown some. And I'm the, you know, I'm, I'm excited about the, the, the task force and, you know, what we could do together and try to find some different ways to, to go at this problem because honestly, um, it, it's, um, it, the police haven't, this problem has gotten worse over the years. I admit that it's, uh, and some of the, we're an enforcement arm of, of, um, you know, law enforcement. That's, um, some of the tools that we use aren't really fixing the problem. Uh, I had a conversation with Jordan about this earlier. And, um, a lot of these folks have, um, dependency issues and/or mental health issues that, um, aren't getting solved with police, um, uh, involvement. We refer to them the services that we can, which are very limited. And then, um, also with the new, um, bills that are being introduced right now. And I know that Councilor Walker had, uh, talked about this before. I think it was, uh, bill 3115, which I think is due for the third reading this week. And there's, uh, there's another bill as well that's due for a second reading. That's, um, that may also have an impact on how we go about this. We have been able to get around some of these issues because a lot of the, a lot of the folks that we're contacting right now in our city are, um, in the parks, for example, and we have a lot of parks. So the, uh, Sandy River Trail, that's, um, you know, under our city parks. Now we have some, um, you know, some ordinances that, you know, the, that we're, that we're working on with that involve the city parks that are a little different than the other code. So, um, the part, every, the parks close at, you know, from dusk to dawn. So, uh, give us a little bit more, um, leeway and how we, um, when we contact these folks are able to, um, get them the help they need or, um, get them out of the area and, uh, things, things like that. Where we run into the really big problems is, uh, not private property, of course, and not so much the city parks yet. But, um, just an example, I'll throw it out there is i- if someone were to, um, you know, put up a, a, a temporary structure in front of just say city hall, that, that public property becomes a different issue. And I think, um, uh, Emily can touch on this a little bit more. Her and I have been, um, speaking about getting the code up to date that we have, which is not up to date at this time. Things are changing pretty quickly and we've been looking at some other cities and trying to come up with some ideas. And we're looking for ideas from the, of course, the council and this new task force. So that would be, uh, really great input to have as we move forward and try to correct that code. That, um, became obsolete when the, um, and I know a lot of you have talked about this before, that nine circuit decision that was, uh, uh, out of the city of Boise that started the city of Boise. So, and I think Emily can touch on some of that. So, uh, I know most of you have heard about that and understand most of it, but, um, she's probably can, uh, get into that a little better than I can. Yes.
Uh, didn't we, I, I remember we did some quick update though, right after that ninth circuit decision. What was that?
We did. There was some minor updates on, and Emily, uh, can touch on this as well, but the finer points, but, um, it's still, um, we're, we're out of compliance. Being with that said, Mayor, the, my officers and my, uh, code enforcement officer as well, they obviously are aware of this and we haven't been acting on that portion. So we're not, we're not, uh, enforcing laws that we cannot enforce. So, uh, they all know about this and know that we're, we're trying to, um, fix this code. So we can, um, come up with some ideas on how we're going to deal with this. So, um, I'll let Emily handle some of that. But did that answer your question, Mayor?
Yeah, thank you.
So, and at the end, I, I, I'm glad to take questions and, um, I'm going to turn it over to Bill Stewart and he's got a short presentation and, um, with a PowerPoint that we're going to, um, let him, um, collaborate on that a little bit, but, uh, I wanted to let all of you know that, um, I'm obviously free to take questions anytime, even if we're not in a meeting, please, um, I'm in my office most all the time. So, um, you can call or get ahold of me if you have something or ideas and I'm excited to be part of this. I will say lastly, that I, I just don't think that, um, you know, law enforcement, uh, should be the tip of the spear, so to speak anymore. As the problems have not been solved. And, uh, I think going at it with a, with a fresh set of eyes for everybody and in a new direction is really exciting. And I'm, I'm happy to be part of it, glad to be part of it. Uh, with that, uh, Bill, thank you for being here. I appreciate it. I know you're a busy man too. Thanks for taking the time. I'll turn it over to you and, uh, also Jeff, if he can share his screen.
Thanks. Hello to everyone. Uh, again, my name's Bill Stewart. I'm a deputy district attorney with the county, uh, specifically I'm a community prosecutor. And if I'm able to share my screen here with, uh, there we go. Can you all see that?
We can.
Okay. I'm going to start the slideshow here. In speaking with Chief Roberts, I, I thought it might be appropriate to give you a brief overview of some of the responses we've been trying in the county as it relates to both livability issues and homelessness. And so this is kind of an overview of that. I wanted to start with, you know, I mentioned that I'm a community prosecutor. It's a, it's a different approach than traditional prosecution. Traditional prosecution is very kind of vertical. Individual less crime is reported by the citizen investigated, and then I, we would prosecute that specifically. Community prosecution is designed to try to address broader issues and say, are the things we can do proactively to improve community, the community, uh, livability. I've been doing this now about 16 years and the majority of my efforts as it relates to community prosecution revolve around homelessness throughout the county. It's a significant issue everywhere we kind of go. So I'm, I'm going to lay out four different types of things we're doing that you may or may not know about. Uh, the first one is not directly focused on homelessness. It's essentially a tool that we've developed to address, uh, kind of flop or zombie houses or houses that are essentially drug houses. And what I found in my experience with that is that we run into significant number of homeless folks who may be at these locations. So when we close down one of these homes through this effort, it tends to, um, simply move people from place to place or put them out on the street. But it is a tool when you're having a neighborhood issue. I know we've been applying, employing this out in your area, in various parts that may or may not be directly in Sandy or just out of Sandy. So that's one tool that we work with. The main point I'll make here is that because we have brought a number of groups together and a number of county groups, we're much more effective than we just try to do it the same old way. And so this has been a benefit of working together within the county and, and outside to try to address issues. In fact, we've done some projects with Ant Farm, uh, from Sandy, uh, to help us clean up some properties. So the next quick overview is a program, uh, that I'm really excited about called Law Enforcement Assisted Diversion. Uh, this started in Seattle and, um, I guess this is my lead that it's the most effective tool that I have seen in 17 years to address homelessness with folks who are drug and are alcohol affected, who are running afoul of the criminal justice system. We've been doing it in the county since 2019. We've got about 170 folks in it. Uh, the way it works is we have four folks from central city concern and they're all trained, uh, out drug and alcohol counselors, but they really work as brokers and service, services. And what we tried to set up was that we would get PCS or possession controlled substance cases referred to us. And if those folks agreed to go through, um, lead, those cases wouldn't get charged. Well, for a number of reasons, that didn't necessarily work. So what we found was most of our referrals came in from social referrals. I mean, if you ask Chief Roberts right now, okay, tell me the 15 or 20 folks who are causing the most problems or we run into, he could name them, I suspect. And that's essentially what, when we ran lead, we found that when our partners in law enforcement, our partners in, uh, the central city concerned people, we work with agencies, like people like Ant Farm, they would say, hey, can you work with these folks? And what happens is that the lead case manager stays with that individual and serves as kind of a connecting point. And I got to tell you, it, quite frankly, when the homeless person sees someone like me or Chief Roberts or Rich Sheldon, they don't want to deal with us. We've made their lives miserable for as long as they've been homeless. The folks from central city concern, our lead folks are, um, they have lived experience and they're able to connect and build trust. And then through that, we work with them to try to get them off the streets. The goal here is not just to move folks around or hey, we got another conviction. It's about how can we make the community safer and more livable by addressing the needs of these folks? So that's one program I'm going to come back to, but I want to show you that, share that with you. Community court. We've had a, it's essentially a treatment court that started back in 2005 in the Oremo Park area, uh, which is kind of between Milwaukee and the town center. Traditionally, that was kind of the highest crime rate in Clackamas. We've expanded the jurisdiction of that program for homeless folks because when you, what I found is that when you, you know, charge someone, a homeless person who's with theft to or trespass or something like that, if you just run them through circuit court, you're not solving problems. You're in fact probably creating more costs. Um, we've got to find ways to, to get, get beyond that. And so community court is working to do that where we connect people with services. The court still has a role in terms of saying things like, hey, we want you to get these accomplished. And if you do, we'll dismiss this case. You won't have to deal with it. And so for trespass, for, uh, uh, littering, for those types of things, disorderly conduct, it's a very important tool, uh, that we found to address homelessness. We've had some very level preliminary conversations, and that's how I first approached Chief Roberts about, hey, what would you think about possibly running a community court session and CMCT is our, you know, acronym for community court in Sandy that would actually partner with agencies and partners there, try to bring accountability, but also connect people with services and have the court work as a way to try to oversee those things. And then finally, I want to talk about a couple of things that have happened very recently that are connected with lead or connected with community court that have been very effective for us. Uh, the first one is that, and again, I think, uh, some of you may be aware of this. There have been some folks in the county that have put together a shower cart, a mobile shower cart. And, uh, this came out of the pandemic when we had some places where homeless folks could get showers, but they couldn't because of safety issues, those things got shut down. When we've worked through that, um, the local rotary clubs actually built, uh, ordered and built a shower cart, uh, that is now being operated by a group called Love One. And it has been phenomenally successful in providing a point of connection and trust. And it's, it's a public health issue because you're helping to address those needs, but the real key is that it's this connecting point for services. Inside the county down like on McLaughlin in 82nd, when you tell somebody who's homeless, hey, you got to go to these four places to get these things done. You got to get ID, you've got to get your social security turned back on or whatever the case may be. They don't have the, it's very difficult for them to do that. If you can bring them to a place where they're getting services and bring those connections to that point, it can be much more effective. We found that in the shower cart. We're running it right now down in Oregon city, at a place called the Milner Vet Clinic. Uh, they do a three-hour session on Sundays. They can serve up to about 18 folks, uh, with showers in these two different stalls that we have. And it's been a phenomenal opportunity to try to get people connected to services, provide there for their immediate needs with meals, hygiene kits, that type of thing, but also connecting with housing and get them off the street. And then finally, um, that's coming down the pipe here, the supportive housing service measure that was approved, uh, uh, in May of 2020. I suspect we will see significant support and expansion of the lead program. And then also, um, as part of what we've seen with that, for both the shower cart and some other programs, we've seen some money that has housed people in motels in the short term through our lead program and through the shower cart. And it has been very successful in terms of reducing the number of folks on the street and the folks that are being, um, put in transition because the goal here is not simply, hey, we're going to sick somebody in hotel for six weeks and then we're done. They go back out on the street. The goal is to connect them with services that are coming down the pipe with this supportive housing service measure. The reason I've kind of given you this quick laundry list, um, of different things, these things are work best when they work together. And if like, for instance, you had a shower event out there, I know you've got, one of your churches provides, I think, weekly meals. Uh, and we've had some conversations with them, but what if you, you were able to put a shower there and we could bring these other services around it? And quite frankly, that's what's really exciting because then we might be able to get some extra lead folks out there to start working with your people directly and then following it through and trying to get these folks off the street. So, um, that was my quick, uh, presentation. Uh, Bernie certainly has my contact information. It's, it's here on the screen. I'm happy to take any questions, uh, you might have, and, uh, I'm going from there. So let me get off of my, stop the sharing here.
Thank you. Um, staff, before we open for questions, is, is this kind of the end of the presentations or do we have more before we, we open it up for questions and group discussion?
Yeah, we didn't want to, thanks, Mayor. We didn't want to dominate the conversation at all. We wanted to do a couple of brief presentations. Probably took a little more time than we meant to, but, um, really wanted to hear from council, sort of talking about this issue, laying out sort of the approach for this task force. You know, and kind of the, the breadth of, of things this task force might be looking at, hearing your ideas. We'll take notes, um, kind of generate an idea and scope of what this task force may do, may do, and also, um, who, who might be on that task force too. But yeah, we'd love to open up for questions and we have lots of resources here to try to answer questions and, and, uh, talk about these ideas.
Outstanding. Thank you. I saw, uh, right when we came back, Councilor Exner had his hand up and then I see Councilor Walker with her hand up. So let's go Councilor Exner and then Councilor Walker, please.
Yeah, this is a, uh, probably a question for Bill or for, um, chief. And, um, I'm aware that there's more than just one definition for homeless. And for me, it, it runs a gamut of the single person who is, um, definitely have some real issues mentally or with drugs, uh, moving up to, couples and families who, uh, either live out of a car or live out of a tent, um, who make some kind of money, but not enough to make some of the minimal prices for even a one-bedroom apartment to people who are, uh, living in, family homes and, and moving on up to just barely able to manage, but not be able to keep up with, you know, even a, uh, with $30,000 or $40,000 a year being able to afford reasonable housing. So when we're talking about the housing situation here, are you referring to the entire gamut? Are you focused on, um, any one of these issues? And admittedly, some of these issues may be very difficult to solve. The ones that I'm aware of that I've seen helped out of our church that have failed time and time and time again are the, usually the singles, uh, with mental and/or drug and/or both kind of situations. But there seems to be easier solutions, maybe better hanging fruit as you go up that list. So where are you at in terms of that, uh, strategy?
Counselor, from my standpoint, you're asking?
Yes. Chief.
Uh, well, from, from my perspective, I'm at that, um, the more challenging end of the, uh, kind of the, the spectrum you, you talked about. Because my job is to improve community safety and livability. And so I have someone who's been a foul of the criminal justice system at relatively low levels, but they have been, they might have arrest cycles of 18 to 30 different arrest cycles. Everything we're doing is not working. We're not getting them off the streets. We're not going. So my focus is on those folks, the challenge, the most challenging ones. Cause they take the highest resources. And so those are the ones that we connect with lead and we're putting to transitional housing. We're not, we're not, uh, there's not, it's not a magic wand because each time I've come across one of these folks, you have to have an individualized response to their needs and concerns and where they're ready to go. That's why lead is so darn good, uh, from my perspective is that our counselors stay with them and work at the level that they're able to work at. And with, they've achieved things that I, you know, as a DA, I like things quick and clean. Homelessness is not quick and clean. And I've been doing it a long time and quite frankly, I got tired of, uh, prosecuting the same guys time and time again, or same women time and time again. We now have some tools that are actually getting people off the streets. I can actually go to a neighborhood and say, no one, I think we made your neighborhood safer. That guy you saw down there that you all felt was stealing stuff from you that was causing problems, he's now housed. He's addressing some of the drug issues he's got. It may not stay that way, but we made a significant progress. And so that's not a, I'm not really answering your question other than the fact that I worked on that more challenging part of the spectrum, I guess.
And I assume that the solutions you're talking about are focused on that end as well. It may go up a little bit, down a little bit, but mostly it's those that are really difficult, really in the crime and drug scene.
Um, the, the shower is, is open to anyone who wants to come in and get it. And so are the connections and the resource. So the nice thing about those efforts is that it's not focused on just people who run afoul of the criminal justice system. It's going to help everyone. And the resources they're going to have at those events, could really make an impact at where the people you're talking about who are maybe have families, either living out of car or couch surfing. So it's possible to do that as well. Uh, there's a, a, a better person to answer that question. And that's, uh, the, the executive director of Love One, our partner on the shower cart, Brandy Johnson, who has been part of these conversations. Brandy is phenomenal. And she can talk to you about that because she's been doing that work for years.
Thank you. Councilor Walker.
I have, um, several questions. First question is going to be to, uh, the chief. And, um, what are the shortcomings that we currently have with our, um, revised code, um, for, uh, homeless camping as it relates to Boise and the Grants Pass rulings? That's one question. And, and then, and what's the plan to get those up, upgraded or, you know, revised to, to reflect that? My second question is for Emily. Um, I'd like to know what the, um, you know, I sat in on the testimony for, uh, uh, the House Bill 3115 and the, and the, basically the only thing that I can see that it outlaws is fires and open flames. And my concern is that it basically legalizes, um, tent encampments, um, semi-permanent tent encampments on public grounds. The rest of it is very vague and subjective about how these things need, need to be objectively reasonable, but, um, it depends on the situation, which does not seem at all objective. So I'd like to hear your, uh, thoughts on really what that means for us as far as, you know, ensuring that, that like the city of Portland, we're, we're not, Allowing homeless encampments in our parks and in our trails. And I also want to know what the other House Bill is that each, somebody mentioned that is also being, I think the chief mentioned it, that's also being considered.
I'm sorry, my dogs are. I think Emily to be able to answer a lot of this, but there's, Counselor Walker, the, there are the shortcomings in our code, our code has been. Got two of them running around. Okay, alright. They're gonna have to go on the cattle now. But so ever since this ruling and we've been looking at that and trying to figure out how we can. We can arrange our code to comply with that, but also at the same time. Have the tools that we need to, to address, say. The ones that are most visible, of course, are the ones everybody sees. The tents that are up and things of that nature and how do we move these people along and that's what I've been working with Emily on. The other House Bill, if you want to, our bill that I was referring to is. This one is in its, due to be in a second reading, I believe this week, it's. Senate Bill 410 and I'm sure Emily is familiar with that one as well, but. And then also the, some of the language in these, Counselor Walker, that you have, that you look, that you were mentioning is, it's confusing because. They throw in a reasonable this factor there that is something that Emily and I, and, and we, this is something we always talking about, so. You know, what is reasonable, what does that mean to us, what, what can we do with that? And it's, it's really, it's, you really get into the weeds of these things and what you can and you cannot do. And you want to make sure, of course, we gotta run that through BEH and all those folks there to make sure we're complying with the law, but it does get very confusing, I admitted, it's confusing to me. And I'm sure it's confusing to Emily sometimes as well. Emily, do you have more to add to that, please?
Sure, yeah, so thanks for having me here. So I, I'll sort of, I didn't prepare a presentation, but it sounds like it would be helpful to sort of go through the case law. And the history and sort of where we are now, and then I'll talk a little bit about how the bill fits in. So the first case that came out in, I think it was twenty, let me see, I wrote it down, twenty nineteen, early twenty nineteen is the Martin case. The Martin v. Boise and that case says that basically homeless persons cannot be punished for sleeping outside on public property. When there aren't other available resources to them. And I believe that after that case, and that's a Ninth Circuit case, you did revise your code to be in compliance with that case. The, the newer case that came down since then that the chief talked about that sort of makes us need to revise your code again. Is this Blake v. Grants Pass case, which is a District of Oregon case, it has been appealed to the Ninth Circuit. And that case put a finer point basically on Martin and, and said, not only. Do people have a constitutional right to sleep, but they have a right to keep warm and dry, which means having materials with them. Such as sleeping materials, bed, bedding, a pillow, a tent, something to cover them from the elements, et cetera. Basically what, there are a couple of other elements of that case that we can talk about later at another time, but. House Bill 3115 basically is an attempt to codify that case in Oregon. So what that case allows is for reasonable time, place and manner restrictions on sleeping outside. That means that people can, that, that what, there are lots of options for regulating camping outside. The, the point is that you cannot outlaw sleeping outside anywhere in public, that's basically what the case says. But there are other options, so that includes requiring that people don't camp during daytime hours. That's, that's something that some other municipalities have done. Another one is, for example, you can prioritize places where camping is never allowed, such as parks or. You mentioned other sort of high value places to the public that would be. More affected by the presence of people camping there, so those places you can protect as long as there are some options. You can also, another regulation some municipalities do is. Limiting the amount of materials a person can have with them at any given time. So there are a lot of options and I think that that's why the chief sort of wanted to talk broadly about. This now and then we can decide what the city's priorities are and then see if we can't make a code that, that. Complies with these cases and the constitution, but also protects the, you know, things that the city wants to protect.
Emily?
Yeah.
On the question of like a reasonable alternative, so I know, for example, the city of Modesto in California. You know, they've gone around and done an inventory on a daily basis or police department has with alternative housing locations. So that these police officers have that on the ready and available to them when they, you know, deal with someone in a homeless community. Now, I, I'm not quite sure what the restrictions are, is, because Sandy is not near that size. You know, are we able to, is there a radius, are we able to utilize, you know, Clackamas County Services or is it within your, your individual jurisdiction, you know, how does that work?
So that has not been determined, this is all very kind of. These cases are pretty new and there's not been a lot of other case law on that. I would say that the case only protects the constitutional rights of people who are experiencing homelessness. When there are no other alternatives available. Now what, you know, there, it's, it's basically a risk assessment, I think that if there are a lot of emergency shelter beds available very nearby. And, you know, let's say someone enforcing the code is willing to provide transit to those emergency shelter beds. Then I would guess that that probably would be compliant. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, so for example, if we did a quick inventory with the metro housing stuff that's passed, all the different, you know, nonprofit nightly beds that are available. If we did some sort of inventory of those and provided those to our officers, if we then worked with Sandy Transit, which. My understanding is that that is usually a resource for us when dealing with homelessness. We could get folks to reasonable alternative housing and be able to sidestep some of these issues with Boise, correct?
Yeah, I believe so, based on what you're outlining, yes, I think that that would work.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it. I didn't mean to skip in front of the line, it just had a lot to do with what Counselor Walker was, was asking there. Don, you're next and then Rich.
Alright, thanks, got the hand down and the mute. I spent almost six years as an ecclesiastical leader in this area, you know, dealing with the homelessness and welfare and other sort of related issues. And so I, I really appreciate the discussion early with, with Bill and the, the idea that lead versus. And other proactive attempts to try to help people change their lives. That said, Sandy has a very unique geography problem when it comes to, to solving this kind of problem. In that especially even when we look at it from a county perspective, because we are disconnected from the center of our county. And, and so if we're talking about, you know, putting people up or looking for motels and vouchers where we could maybe help people get into a motel. Well, the cheapest motels and generally are in Gresham, Troutdale, down by the airport and so forth and would now left our county and everything else. So when we start thinking about how do we get an integrated support system. Bringing people to Sandy in from the outskirts of Sandy in to have a shower and talk to a resource specialist and have a dinner. Isn't really useful because the work, the housing and, and even the counseling and the, and the specialists and even the, the. Their, their caseworkers and all those other folks, they're in Oregon City or in Portland. And so. It, this seems like it needs to be solved at a county or bigger level and not by a city, especially. One like us with the geography that is so far pushed away from everybody. It feels like if we started to solve this, we could make the problem worse if we're not careful. Bill, do you want to comment on the geography part?
Let me try this. What we found to be successful is that we have to go where the homeless folks are. Even for folks that are camping or living down around 82nd and McLaughlin, to tell them to go up to Red Soils is like two bus rides. It, it's like the moon for them and of course, plus they would leave their stuff that is kind of their whole life. And so the successful approaches we've seen is where you go to where they are. Now, the solution may be if they're gonna get housed in hotel, it may be leaving the city, but there, from what I've been told, you have some folks there in Sandy now or just immediately out of your city. Who keep coming in for services and restrooms and turning bottles and that type of thing. And so the, the goal is not to create a, a big camp. It's to try to start reducing the numbers by connecting the services that they don't currently have access to.
Thank you. I agree a lot with what you said there, Don. Rich?
Two things. Earlier Carl started to say something and then didn't get to finish it, if he remembers what he said, I wanted him to get a chance to say it. If he's like me at flights and like ten seconds, if I don't write it down.
I'll, I'll speak, I got another thing coming up in my head too, I'll speak on them both once you're done there.
Okay. I, I, that's Don kind of said what I was gonna say, the geography and the. Locations that we struggle with and then strictly due to the lack of services out here too, at our population.
Well, shoot. Here he'd waited all this time. We'll, we'll go ahead, why don't we go to you Carl and then when Rich kind of comes back, we'll scoot him ahead of the line.
Alright, I'm doing the same thing, little on my hand and unmuting myself. I guess for me, I really think that this is a multiple kind of an issue. I brought up the fact that there were several levels of people that are struggling with homelessness and I, I know that it sounds like this one is focused on. The most difficult, the most on the ground. Kinds of folks who typically work with the crime as part of their background or mental illness and so on. Those sort of things really are very, very difficult to affect. I, I, as part of a church member for several years within the community, I know many of us have reached out to some of these individuals and they just push us away. There's, they just don't want to be given help in some cases, now maybe there are some that are in that point where they're willing to be helpful, but. It's really difficult for me, it seems like that they have real. Easy solutions and, and I don't know what your success ratio is yet, Bill here, but it sounds like you have at least the ability to get some of these folks. Move from. The destitute kinds of conditions they live in to at least some sort of help, they get a shower, maybe a meal or two a day and that kind of thing. But there, there are even the more difficult folks who just is really difficult to find a solution for and I, I don't know how that would be resolved. Wasn't very recently, I think it was Kim Yamashita was still around when I saw this happen. I had a guy that was not only drunk, but he was about six foot eight and he had a horrendous mouth on him and he was trying to take on the police and. It just wasn't a solution that was gonna be very good for him and then as soon as they took him off to the. Jail at that time, it wasn't but three or four days later, he wound up in the streets of city of Sandy again and taking on the cops one more time and those kind of individuals, it seemed like. They scare people, mom does not like to walk by those kind of situations, especially if they got a stroller, so it makes people really concerned. And then finally, I know there are people like that that end up on business doorstops. The night there and they defecate, they trash, they do all the things that nobody really wants to see next morning. That happens relatively often at our office there on Proctor and. They're gone by time I open up, but you see the residues and it's just filthy and really nasty and. I don't know what you do about those kind of things, especially if they disappear because they know that they don't want to be around when the business opens up. How do you solve those kind of problems, those seem like very, very difficult. And, and Chief, how, how are we dealing with those kind of folks too?
Part of the time.
Sure.
You make a really good point, Counselor Exner, that some of these folks, when you, your first, your first part of your comment was. Very true, so some of these folks, if, I'll just throw out a number, if, if you contact ten of them and you're asking them if they want help or do, from, whether it be us or. One of Bill's programs, a large number and we're gonna say no, just, I, I just want to be left alone. So how do you get around that, right, when you know the folks need some help and they could use some of these services, but they just don't want to do that? So that, that becomes another issue, I'm sorry, go ahead, Counselor.
It wouldn't be a problem if they didn't create fear within the community and then also get involved in the crime. But it would be a problem, I guess, if you look at it from a moral issue and that kind of thing, but if they don't want to be touched, they don't want to be given any help, they just want to be left alone. That's probably not a big issue, except for maybe some of the trash that they leave around, but it's the fear and it's the. Leftovers from the night before that do cause problems, when I see.
Yeah, well, obviously that we will deal with any criminal issues, but you still have the, you still have the issue, the underlying issue. That you're talking about, Counselor Exner, so, but what I would say is, I don't think that as a group and I, I believe that most of you would believe this is we, we can't let that deter us, right? We, you know, we, I would say that we won't let that deter us in what you're, the, the, this task force mission is gonna be. And I did want to also mention, Jordan, if you're okay with this, that we haven't, I know we're running a little bit low on time and. Maggie hasn't had a, a chance to speak about her program at all. And I sat in on a meeting last week, I was just to sit in, I, I hadn't been to one of their meetings with Maggie's group and I, I was really impressed with the progress they made in such a short period of time. And it seemed to me like they were already working on a lot of these issues that would be good for the council to hear about their work and what they're doing. And to consider maybe kind of collaborating with that, Maggie, would you, would you mind saying a few words, please?
Sure, yeah, um, I, I definitely think that, you know, as folks have been talking, it's clear to most of us, right? Like all of these issues are very intertwined and that's what makes it so complicated. And so one of the things that I think is great in addition to the work that folks like Bill Stewart are, are doing is those upstream approaches. As well as recognizing, like Counselor Exner was saying, there's a whole gamut, you know, in, in terms of like what homelessness means and people's experiences. So every situation is unique and obviously, yes, we have gaps in ability for people to access services out here. Which is a very common problem in most rural areas. And so that is really what the task force that I'm coordinating right now is looking at is how do we. Make services more equitable and accessible for people living here. And knowing also that there's folks up the mountain just a little bit of a ways who like come into Sandy, even though, you know, we. We aren't Oregon City and we don't have all of those services here, like this is where people come from boring, from, you know, even Estacada sometimes, just because transportation is such a huge barrier for folks. And so, you know, I think that there are a lot of ways that this task force could work either with an additional existing task force looking specifically at homelessness. Or even within the task force in terms of what we're already working on, because definitely that's an issue that people are very concerned about. And we have folks from the county and different nonprofits right here in Sandy. That are, you know, directly working with homeless folks in the area already. And then we're planning on doing a large scale needs assessment within the area as well, coming up pretty soon. And that could be information and data that could be used for the purposes of, you know, trying to figure out how to tackle the issue of homelessness here. That was what you were hoping for, Chief Robert, in terms of information, but yeah.
I just, I just, I wanted to give you a chance, an opportunity to, to let the folks know what you're doing. And like I said, I was very impressed with how far you've come in such a little time with what you're doing, I was very impressed, I wanted everybody to hear that, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Rich, let's, let's give this a shot, brother.
Yeah, I'm not sure if my internet's gonna last, so real quick for Bill, if you could talk, if I'm getting out, if you could talk about the success of both chronic nuisance. Yeah, I'm not sure if my internet's going to last. Uh, so real quick for Bill, if you could talk, if I'm getting out, if you could talk about, uh, the success of both, uh, chronic nuisance as well as the exclusion programs. And I think that would might maybe address some of Carl's concerns a little bit. And then, uh, to Maggie, is there any, uh, COVID money coming down the chute, um, as part of the bill, uh, for resources and that? There's, from my understanding, there's a bunch of money earmarked for that as well. And is that going to bring any, uh, help with resources?
Want me to go first?
Yeah, please, Bill.
Okay, so, um, the, the crime nuisance order is a tool that we use for that neighborhood ability project to essentially shut down problematic houses. And the exclusion, uh, is a partnership that the sheriff's office runs that someone can get charged with trespass if they come to a place that they've been told they can't be at, whether that's public or private. But, but the, the more specific issue is that lead and the shower Carlos, uh, these aren't get out of jail free cards. I see this as kind of a push and a pull. I mean, we still enforce the law and we still hold people accountable. But a lot of my role, when we have someone who's either working with lead or is homeless, is trying to find a solution through their criminal justice system that makes sense. So they're still going to end up in jail if they keep breaking the law, but we're going to try to find some way to make it, make it happen. So for instance, the lead folks on the six foot eight guy you were talking about, that scares everybody when you see him. Hey, that's, that's messy and that's, you charge them and you, you jail them, but we connect them with a lead guy while he's in there and they start trying to build the trust and work so you get a longer term solution. And so I see it working both sides. Thanks.
Thank you. Maggie.
Um, so at this point, um, I've just been doing this on a volunteer basis and, and we've just kind of started looking into, you know, what, what is it that this task force wants to focus on? And so, um, I don't have a lot of familiarity in terms of the particulars of what COVID money could be available for our purposes. But just from a anecdotal, uh, standpoint, I, I do believe there could be things that definitely we could utilize. As well as other different types of grants that we could reach out to either from the state or county. Um, and so I definitely think that's something that the task force is very interested in, in looking at.
Who's, who's at that table then? I, I, I'm sorry. I thought you were, um, I may have misunderstood. Ernie, who's at that table?
Well, I will let, I'll let Maggie go ahead and answer that, but we do have, uh, police represented on there, uh, and fire as well as Sandy fire, but go ahead, Maggie.
Yeah. So, um, with clockless women's services, uh, we have representation from the Sandy Rotary Club, Sandy Fire Department, Sandy Action Center, the Oregon Trail School District, Sandy Police Department, uh, Sandy's Helping Hands, uh, Continue of Care, New Housing Services, DD and MH Providers of Oregon, who do the Sandy Activity Night here, uh, Child Welfare and Self-Sufficiency at DHS, uh, Sandy Behavioral Health Center, Ant Farm. Um, and then depending on what the needs are from what you all decide, you know, we definitely could add other folks that have a lot of interface time with the homeless folks in our area, like the library, um, and things like that.
Thank you, Maggie. Um, Don.
Thanks. I just want to make sure that we're careful about, and we put real names and peak, not real names, but let's put real faces on these homeless people we're talking about. In my experience, you know, we've talked about a few outliers and maybe that's a big percentage, but some of these folks are families. They're, they're people our age, young people, old people, some who have work experience and fell onto hard times, others who got involved in some drugs or other problems and suddenly find themselves out. But they're, they're real peel people with, with, uh, just a whole range of problems. Many of them, most of them maybe, I, I think would have a very difficult time navigating the, um, various social services to help themselves. In, in my experience, I, I encountered one person who had enough going on that when we gave her housing for two or three months, she was able to get social security and everything else lined up to where she's mostly, you know, on her own several years later now. But most of them require a lot of handholding. I mean, I've got a special needs daughter and a wife who's been through college. It took thousands of hours to get everything lined up for her care. That's an investment that somebody has to make on behalf of these folks. And so make, make no mistake, I like the idea that we're going to do it, but, and I like Maggie that you volunteered and you want to do it. As far as direction to a future task force, this has to be something that we are partnering with bigger organizations. We cannot do this alone. And so that's, that's my direction is that we can, that task force needs to be working to build those relationships and establish those working agreements if need be, and potentially even putting money into some other area that's better suited, if that's what it takes. But that, that's, that's my recommendation.
Thank you. Let, let me jump in here real quick. So I have a question. Uh, one is, you know, we spend a lot of time and this is a big portion of where we need to spend our time is in prevention as well as, as, as long, longer term resources and help. But it, it's part of what also is of this is, it's kind of short term as well and, and dealing with, you know, current, you know, homelessness, housing and camps. ODOT, you know, we've got an issue here in the city on some ODOT property, uh, that not too dissimilar from other cities in the Portland area dealing with ODOT property. Uh, I understand that ODOT property is, is technically private property, but they are within our jurisdiction. You know, what if any have cities had any success in, in dealing with ODOT properties and encampments there? Is there any kind of ordinances or even, even fines, uh, that we can put on, uh, someone like ODOT, a private property owner who is not addressing some of these nuisance issues? And maybe no one has an answer to that. I'm just, I'm curious if anybody does.
Hey Bill, again, going back to the county, I know they're part of the exclusion program as well. I don't, do they fall under, does ODOT fall under chronic nuisance too? I personally like, I, I might be a little prejudiced and I'm not trying to give it a shout out, but Bill's on to something. The NLP program works. I think there's a lot of good case studies on it. If you're not familiar with it, I highly encourage you to reach out to it. Um, and they, cause they've been dealing with this issue for a long time and all these issues aren't new to us. They're, they've been going on down on 82 and 99 for a while now. But Bill, correct me if I'm wrong, ODOT is actually in the exclusion program, right? And so,
That's my understanding, yes.
Yeah. It just, in fact, it just came back on. So, uh, there are tools. We just need to look at them and do it. And I agree with Don, uh, that you, we need a holistic approach. But we, we need a short-term solution and a long, long game both. Or you, you'll lose every time. And so, um, having, uh, listening to, uh, Maggie, uh, all the right people are at the table for the long game. Unfortunately, also back to Don's point, in my experience is a lot of times there's, uh, there's substance and mental health issues. That, that are, are with the ones that are getting the police contact because that's what's triggering that, right? They're, they're not just normal hanging out at the park. And so there has, and they don't typically want to be on the medications and stuff because it doesn't make them feel good. Or they don't want to get off the substances because it's a really horrible path through that. So you kind of need that carrot and that's where Bill comes in and helps kind of provide that carrot, uh, to keep them moving forward. And then with all the organizations that Maggie has there at the table, I think you have a good long game. We do need to really clean up our ordinances so that we can get this short game moving forward, or else we're not, we're going to be behind and there's not much incentive to join. So.
Uh, let's go, uh, Kathleen and then Lori.
Um, I think it's, I'm so happy to hear the amount of money being put towards, um, affordable housing, like $2 billion this last year and almost $1 billion starting in 2016 to 2018. I know there's a lot more money going towards mental illness, uh, services and, uh, drug addiction services. But my, I guess, opinion about all that money that we're throwing at it is that it's best, most effective if we organize those services to apply to lots of clients instead of kind of giving everybody, you know, a thousand dollars, you kind of give somebody, you know, give organizations a million dollars to kind of really make the money go further. And I guess my concern is that I want to see effective help for these folks. And it, in my opinion, it needs to be on a large scale basis that is not, um, something as like located in the city of Sandy. We have a fairly relatively thankfully small problem. And, and I think that I don't want to step forward on behalf of the county like, and, and volunteer to, to develop more services out here in Sandy because of all the reasons that were already said. That said, we have an excellent transit system. We have, you know, great community services, both, you know, the police, the, the parks people, the, um, uh, community services, people that work with, with, um, you know, folks that call up needing help. And then we have excellent NGOs, the, you know, the Helping Hands, the Ant Farm, the Community Action Center, all those folks can kind of, kind of help take the folks that are, you know, suffering in our community and get them to those larger areas to provide those services. And I guess that's really the way I'd like to go. I'm very concerned about expanding services out here because I don't think the bang for the buck is there. And I don't think it's going to be effective in the long term.
Thank you, Kathleen. Lori.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna agree, uh, big time with Kathleen on this one. Uh, we also don't have the resources nor the funding. And a lot of the funding Kathleen, that you were just speaking about, um, being at the C4 meeting this last week is not going to any of the areas outside the metro boundary. So everybody inside metro is getting a lot of money. They're getting, you know, money for alternative housing, money for homeless issues. But nobody outside that metro bound, uh, boundary is going to receive any of those resources. So we're kind of on our own out here. Um, and we don't have the resources. We don't have the finances to be able to deal with this. We don't have the law enforcement, uh, to be able to deal with this stuff. And, um, you know, many of you may or may not realize, but a large number of these individuals in this town are a public safety risk. And we do not have the public safety capability to deal with them. And what we're seeing, uh, some of what we're seeing is because of a lot of the goings on in Portland and, uh, you know, east Multnomah County, they're being pushed out into east Clackamas County because they feel safer. They're not getting in fights. Um, people aren't trying to harm them. And so they're moving out into our area, um, quickly and, uh, because, because they can, they can go on Tickle Creek Trail or they can go back. I was walking behind the high school with my dog on Saturday afternoon and walking down all of these trails that are from homeless people. Living behind the high school and back behind the property off of Bell Street. You know, it, it, they're, they're all over the place and, uh, and it's, I don't, it's, it's not that I have any ill will toward these individuals, but a bulk of these individuals, like Chief Roberts said, and like, uh, Counselor Sheldon has mentioned, are deny, deny, deny services because they want to live and they want to be where they're at because people don't bother them. So, um, um, which with Rich on this one, that I really want to focus on our code first and then start working, uh, laterally out into other areas. But I want to deal with our code. I want to fix what we've got here at home and then let's start, we'll start from there.
Thank you, Lori. Uh, well, to kind of get us wrapped up here, uh, one is, I just want to say, I think we're all on the same page. I think we, we all agree, uh, greatly with that. You know, in, in 1986, uh, Portland Mayor Bud Clark did a 12-point plan on homelessness. It got national recognition. And there are three main points of that, that I think would really bode well for us, you know, looking ahead. Uh, one is reach out to those who want help. Two, be firm with those who don't. And three, create an environment which residents can feel safe and businesses can flourish. Pretty easy and to a very hard problem. What I would say is from what I'm hearing here tonight, you know, let's listen, address our ordinances. Uh, let's, uh, let's also think outside the box. You know, uh, I just gave an example of what the city of Fodesto did earlier. And what we're looking to do is to provide some options into our officers as well as our community, service organizations and just the folks that deal with homelessness and their, you know, interactions in their daily lives. To be able to have some different avenues in which they can plug people into resources, have a firm hand with folks that are maybe, uh, nuisance or out of line. But really just creating kind of a, 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 a better community and a community that is, is livable for everyone who resides here. So great discussion, uh, start of a, a longer discussion here tonight. I'm sure we'll be doing another work session here real shortly to provide even better direction. Uh, but I think we have a pretty good feel for how we want to kind of start this off, which is really addressing some of our ordinances here in town and and really seeing kind of what we can do in the short term. Also keeping an eye on some of the longer term things that we can do. So thank you, everybody. With that, let's take a five-minute, uh, break before our city council meeting. We'll convene our Sandy City Council meeting at 7:10. Uh, with that, I will, um, adjourn our, our work session. Thank you again.
Thanks, Bill. Thanks, Emily.
Thank you to all of our guests.
Thanks, Maggie. It's Chief.
Let's go ahead and start our, uh, process here now that it's 7:10. I'll call the Sandy City Council meeting to order. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic,
for which it stands.
All right, welcome. Um, Jeff, will you please call the roll?
Yes, Counselor Pete's.
Here.
Counselor Smallwood.
Here.
Counselor Sheldon.
Here.
Counselor Walker.
Here. I don't know if you called well, uh, roll for the, uh, pre, uh, the workshop, but you saw that I was there.
We counted again. Yep.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Exner.
I'm here.
Counselor Hokinson.
Here.
Mayor Palin.
Here. All right. Well, welcome everyone to a beautiful, uh, evening here in Sandy. Um, I'm going to go ahead and start off our council meeting, uh, per usual with just a quick review of tonight's agenda. I'll call on any changes, uh, to the agenda. We'll then go into public comment. That will be the time that council welcomes any comments. Uh, there's instructions on our agenda and then of course I will read that at the given time. Uh, then there'll be a response to the previous public comments or were no comments at our last meeting. So that will, that'll go by pretty quickly. We'll enter into a presentation from wastewater improvements, detailed discharge, alternative, um, evaluation. And our consent agenda tonight, we have our city council meetings from our March 15th meeting as well as a policy for pesticide use in Sydney parks. Under old business, we have our wastewater rate model update, our full faith and credit obligation series 2021, as well as resolution 202105 authorizing a loan from Clean Water State Revolving Loan Fund. Under new business, we have our advisory bodies, governance and structure as well as a, uh, B-City USA discussion. We'll then have a report from our city manager committee and council reports, and then we'll adjourn, uh, for this evening. With that, is there any proposed changes to tonight's agenda? Seeing none, we'll move forward to public comment. This is a time in which council welcomes any comments. Uh, again, instructions are on the agenda, but if you are participating online, click the raised hand button and wait to be recognized. If you're participating via telephone, dial star nine to raise your hand and wait to be recognized. Just a reminder to state your name and address for the record and you'll be provided three minutes to speak. Jeff is the one who leads us during this. So Jeff, let us know if we have any public comment, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll just wait for a moment for any raised hands. Uh, as the mayor said, there's a button at the bottom of your screen, or if you're joining over the phone, dial star nine. And Mayor, I do see one hand up. I'll go ahead and click on the name to allow this person to unmute themselves. And please state your name and address for the record and you'll have three minutes. Welcome.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Hi. Hey, everyone. Uh, my name is Nina Alter. And, uh, Jeff, I emailed you my address. So you have that. And I live in, uh, tax district, uh, 46004. Um, I just, uh, was hanging out and listening to the work session for the, the task force and homelessness. I'm really excited to see folks in Sandy talking about an issue that's really near and dear to my heart. But I wanted to, uh, raise my hand and talk because I'm a little troubled by the framing of homelessness as kind of an us for something. Uh, diversion and exclusion effort versus a human effort and discussing our livability options to handle them. For two years, they included my mother, which is something that I've also spoken with Chief Roberts about. Um, many of America's homeless people are families with small children, veterans, elders, and physically disabled people who are unable to work. Not only is it people with dependency issues, but also folks so emotionally broken that they cannot handle the systemic and financial burdens of modern living that everyone on this call is probably able to handle no problem. Things that I just completely took for granted as being really easy for me in the four years that I worked with homeless youth in San Francisco. My goodness, even getting up to show up to work on time was a mountain to climb for them that I could have never imagined. And it, it truly blew my mind. Um, people can't not to be a burden of tax. Um, people can't not to be a burden to taxpayers, but because they're terrified of the shelter system. My mom tried the shelter system and she was terrified. There was open sex among residents. There were schizophrenics in crisis and theft was rampant. Women's shelters had long wait lists and were typically for women with small children who were younger, not elder women such as my mom, um, who herself was also in a state of emotional crisis. And too ashamed to even call up my brother and I for assistance. Unhoused folks typically have no extended family to care for them. Or as with my mom, they were just too ashamed. Shelters are not reasonable alternative housing. Neither are motels. Apart from sheltering from weather, motels only reinforce the trauma of displacement. And yes, permanent displacement is traumatic. I would like to encourage the folks in leadership in the city of Sandy to please um, consider just as a starting point to even look at our homeless uh, neighbors as our neighbors. How would you want to treat or handle your own child or your own elder parent if they were to become homeless, other than wanting to, you know, send them money so they could hurry up and get a room and just, you know, take them in with everything you can. It's, it's so much more complicated than that. And even those of us with the means to care for our older, elder parents, sometimes they can't. And homelessness.org is a terrific resource. It's a housing-first website. And I'd like to encourage all of our counselors to look at that and to please take uh, the humane approach to end homelessness, not simply busing people out and not throwing the ball at them. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Alter.
Thank you, Ms. Alter. Um, Jeff, is there any additional public comment? Just a reminder to click the raised hand button or if you're participating via telephone, dial star nine.
Okay, Mayor, I'll just wait one more moment. And Mayor, I do not see any other raised hands.
All right. Thank you so much, Jeff. Um, again, there is no response for staff to provide uh, for public comments for our March fifteenth meeting. So moving forward in our agenda, we'll go to a presentation on wastewater improvements, the detailed discharge alternatives evaluation. Jordan, when you'd like to kick us off?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, so you noticed tonight, we have a lot of panelists uh, at this council meeting, um, and a lot of presenters uh, tonight. The theme is, is wastewater. Um, and the first presentation is on the detailed alternative discharge evaluation. Uh, if council recalls, this study was funded by um, a state grant of five hundred thousand dollars through um, at the two thousand nineteen legislative um, cycle. And many thanks to the mayor and counselors for um, advocating for that. This is, uh, I think at the time we called this the green alternatives. So after the completion of the facilities plan, the wastewater system facilities plan, um, the next step was looking at um, in detail, the Sandy River discharge, what alternatives uh, were there to that discharge? Recycling opportunities, um, you know, transporting the, the waste to another uh, service provider. And then also looking in more detail at the, the Sandy River discharge sites and those alternates. Um, and of course exploring further the idea of uh, wetlands as one of those alternatives that can offset uh, any impacts to the Sandy River, um, especially in the summer when the temperatures uh, may create uh, an exceedance problem. Um, so there was an update on this work, I think to the council back in the fall. I am, can't quite remember if it was October or when it wasn't there, but um, we also did a presentation in front of the watershed councils. I think that was also back in the fall. Um, and, and other parts of, of project components uh, were provided um, at that time too, an update on those. Um, but uh, Murray Smith uh, is here. Uh, their team is here tonight to do this presentation. They've been working with us uh, since, oh boy, two thousand eighteen, maybe even before two thousand eighteen on the wastewater system facilities plan. Uh, we contracted with them to uh, do the alternatives evaluation. Um, and uh, Matt Hickey's the principal on the project that uh, will be doing the presentation and introducing his team. Um, I think uh, there's about a twenty to thirty minute presentation, Matt. Um, and typically we, we don't mind having council ask questions throughout. Um, so if you do have questions, I will try to answer those. Um, and uh, or you can hold them to the end, uh, either way. But like I said, this is kind of a wastewater night. Um, I think Madness Team will give a little bit of an overview of, of the project. Um, but focus uh, more on this uh, evaluation and the findings. We do plan on getting, there's, it's a big report actually. So there's a lot of uh, technical memos and different things that they looked at with this evaluation. We do plan on posting all those on our website for review by the watershed councils, interested individuals. Um, and, and of course the public uh, to take a look at, at the results. Um, a lot of good information in there. Um, and there's a lot of work that was put into this study. So um, Matt, I think I'll, I'll hand it off to you now. Um, I think you do have a slideshow to share, um, but maybe introduce your team before you, you jump into.
Sure. Thank you, Jordan. Um, yeah, tonight, uh, again, Matt Hickey, I'm principal engineer with Murray Smith and project manager for the uh, detailed discharge alternatives evaluation. Uh, presenting with me tonight will be Jason Flowers, Ken Beehill and Katie Husk. Uh, Jason, do you want to share the?
Yep, will do. Switch. Two seconds.
There, you see the presentation? There you go. That looks good. Great. Thanks. Um, so the agenda for this evening, um, provides some of the purpose and the background for the project. Uh, presented the findings and included some updates over the last few months and then also talk about the next steps of the overall improvements. And so, um, as, as Jordan mentioned, uh, we did a presentation back in September of uh, twenty twenty. Uh, most of the city council uh, saw that back then. They will try to recap of some of those thing, items we presented then and provide some of the latest information of developed over the last few months since then. Uh, purpose of presentation is to uh, report the key findings from the studies, analyses. Uh, as Jordan mentioned, we prepared several techni- technical memoranda to the city, presented those uh, the, the details of the assessments. Um, we'll provide recommendations for the, based on our analyses and also uh, discuss the next steps, um, the overall system improvements. So the need for the system upgrades is a result of a number of issues within the existing system. Uh, there's high influ- infiltration in the city's collection system uh, due to older pipes and other issues. Uh, the existing wastewater trimmer plant has limited capacity um, to uh, set to accommodate growth. Uh, last upgrades were about twenty-five years ago. So the plant's getting relatively old. Um, there's also limited uh, capacity at the Tickle Creek where the existing plant discharges. Uh, it's limited capacity to accept more influent, effluent. And um, the city is also in our mutual order from DEQ to remedy these issues. So just to orient people, uh, relative to the project elements, the uh, collection system basically encompasses the city limits. Uh, the existing wastewater trim plant is west of town and the existing Tickle Creek uh, discharge is downstream of the plant. And also in the existing system is the uh, container nursery, which is west of the plant, which is used for discharge of the effluent during the summer months. So just an overview of the approach to address these issues, uh, starting on the right side is the satellite treatment, which involves a MBR treatment and a diversion pump station that Jason will talk more about. Uh, this element also includes uh, discharge to the same Sandy River, a new discharge and also potentially discharge to uh, the former Rosan Lake site uh, to address flows in the summer months. Uh, the middle part of the image there talks about is the collection system. Again, uh, the upgrades there involves upgrades to the pipe to reduce INI. And then the right, the left side of the image is the um, there's upgrades to the existing plant uh, that will happen while continuing to use the irrigation uh, site uh, for um, during the summer months. That I'll hand it to Jason to talk about the uh, plant.
Yes, thank you, Matt. Appreciate it. So yeah, today we'll talk about the work as we move forward with the planning level of figure out kind of how well the east side satellite treatment facility will be located, how we're going to connect to the existing treatment system, a collection system there. And to kind of further advancing, get it forward to the next steps before um, design begins for the project. So the treatment system itself, what we're going to be doing is a song, a diversion pump station is going to take water from the existing collection system and divert a fraction of that water over to the new satellite uh, facility. We'll have kind of standard front-end treatment system processes at the beginning, just kind of due to initial screening. Then we're going to have kind of stay of the art, if you will, uh, membrane bioreactor systems that will be put in there to produce high-quality effluents that will then be discharging into the Sandy River. Um, in addition to the membrane bioreactor, which must can produce high-quality water, there'll be a UV disinfection system as well as a post-aeration system. Kind of boost up the oxygen content in the water before discharge into Sandy River when we plan to do that. So we kind of spent some time with the concept and pretty much further fleshed out all the details associated with it, like making certain that everything fit within the constraints that we have that being proposed at this point. This is a location off of Sunset and University is where this location is. And we've kind of worked through all the details, considered some existing um, storm drainage uh, system that's located right here and kind of figure out the ideal location. We kind of worked through some of the details and further refined that and identified all the unique basis design criteria for major pieces of equipment for that. The main crux of it though is based upon this analysis, we've kind of estimated the high uh, quality water that we expect to come from this MBR facility with very, very low um, organic material. That's what the BOD is there. A TSS that is a Tolston solids, which is very little, uh, low levels of nitrogen. Tubidity is going to be extremely low. This is going to be very clear water. And then also in terms of bacteria, it's going to be pretty much non-detect uh, based upon we're proposing for the system. And that pretty much covers kind of a high level, what we've done for the MBR facility. Now I'm going to pass it over to Ken, who's going to talk about some of the outfall options from this facility.
Uh, thank you, Jason. Uh, for some of the counselors, this will just be uh, an update. Some of you, you'll be hearing it for the, the first time, but uh, once the water is treated in that new M, MBR facility that Jason talked about, um, the question that we were evaluating in the study was where would that effluent go? And because Tickle Creek was so small, the, the natural place to look would be on the Sandy River. So we're going to talk a little bit about potential outfall locations that we looked at. Next slide, please. So there were three primary sites that we looked at, right at the Oxbow near the city park was a, a primary area we looked at at the beginning. There's another area we, that was uh, close to a Portland General Electric um, right away that we called a PGE site. And then finally the site that was on uh, below Red Bridge off of Tenlake Road. What we found in the evaluations is that the downstream sites, that PGE site we called in the Oxbow site, that the channel of the river moves in those locations routinely from uh, season to season. And so uh, locating an outfall in those locations would be a problem. On the slide, we call it geomorphic instability. It just really means if you put an outfall there, the stream could move and the outfall could be high and dry later. There, it's very dynamic uh, movement of the stream in those locations. And uh, in contrast, uh, near Revenue Bridge, there's a real stable basalt formation and the channel doesn't migrate. It's deep, it's fairly swift moving. And so that would be a good uh, location for an outfall from a geomorphic point of view. The other things that came into play here was looking at fisheries as well. So the, the two downstream sites um, are below the Cedar Creek Fish Hatchery. And so there was some concern by Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife about impacts to fish um, uh, for those two sites as well. And there are some uh, some reds and some spawning areas in there that would also potentially be impacted. As you get up toward Revenue Bridge, that's more of a migration corridor for uh, salmonids. And so the fisheries uh, regulators had less concern about potential fish impacts at Revenue Bridge site. And so that is the recommended site that we have right now. This is another figure that shows that a little bit as an aerial image and I'm sure you've all been on that road and next time you drive over it, take a look down at the channel below there. And that's where we're proposing to locate a new outfall. Next slide.
And it looks like we have a hand raised from.
Before we move on, I have a question. Received several comments uh, from folks who are wondering why we would even consider uh, putting anything into the Sandy River proper when we have Rosan Lake as an outfall location. Um, even in the wintertime, when you have a fairly high um, uh, level of outflow compared to the summertime, why wouldn't we just keep on putting that stuff directly into Rosan Lake? And why would we even think about putting it into the Sandy River, just straight into it?
Okay, that's a good, a good question, Carl. Um, Rosan Lake site has the size and the ability to take a portion of the effluent as the community grows. Um, it does not have uh, enough area to take the effluent year-round. And we're going to talk a little bit more about um, the whole land application and wetlands creation that was Rosan Lake. But what's real important there is a flow balance. The, and you have to, you have to manage the flow that's coming in from the sewage treatment plant, the natural flow that comes in from rainwater, any kind of infiltration that takes place, you need to ma- manage the evapotranspiration. The Rosan Lake site is not large enough to take the discharge year-round from the city.
That's true. Then what would be our, there'd be a lot of limitation in terms of growth for city of Sandy. Let's say you get twenty thousand people in our city that are using the system. Uh, seems like we would have a very limited growth potential for Rosan Lake. Is that true?
Uh, not, not really. Um, so the Rosan Lake site, what we've proposed so far is to have three different wetland cells and that'll show up on another drawing here in a minute. And the city part with two cells and then go to a third cell once the community grows. And really the discharge into the Sandy River um, is going to provide a lot of capability for the community to grow. The, the, the main concerns in terms of water quality on the Sandy Rivers in the summertime and in the fall. Yeah, during, during the winter, the river has what we call a sunup capacity. It can accept that highly treated effluent without any impacts to the river. And just for a, a, a general sense of how much flow would be uh, coming from the treatment plant versus how much flow comes naturally in the river, there'd be less than one percent of the flow in the river after the discharge would be from the treatment facility. So ninety-nine percent of it would be natural stream flow from the Sandy River. So there's quite a bit of capacity in the river to take that discharge, except in the summertime and in the early fall as well.
Yeah, it seems to me like that's really the logic for going to the Sandy River system is the velocity is so much larger than the Clackamas side. Are you going to discuss or will there be a time to have conversation about the impacts of even uh, very high-quality outflow after we treat it with the MBR on fish uh, wetlands? This is a general impact and um, on our vegetation as well. Is that something that you'll be talking about later? Or is that something that should be, have a better conversation somewhere else?
Well, well, um, those, so um, as the project progresses, there's going to be, you know, more work done looking at the details of the discharge into the Sandy River. So um, some of the next steps would be to acquire a permit from DEQ that would allow discharge into the Sandy River. And so at that point, you start to have some design detail of the outfall, what it would be like. And the DEQ starts to assign mixing zone boundaries and things like that. So you can look at more detailed evaluations. We've done some screening reviews of water quality. And again, that's where we have come up with the recommendation uh, of going to Rosan Lake in the summer and the fall because our screening reviews showed that there would be some temperature impacts that would be harmful to fisheries and other aquatic resources in the summer and in the fall. So those have been done, but more detailed reviews can take place. As far as impacts on vegetation, Rosan Lake, um, uh, maybe I'll come back on that and, and tell you some recommendations that we have for Rosan Lake and then I can talk about vegetation there.
It's not my intention to make this a real long conversation. Maybe we can have some conversations afterwards.
Okay, and I can talk a little bit about vegetation in a minute. Uh, now Katie's going to talk a little bit about the, the pipeline route. So in order to Now Katie's going to talk a little bit about the, the pipeline route. So in order to get to these outfalls that I just presented. We need to, we had to evaluate different pathways of collecting the sewage and taking the pipeline to get the water to the river. And Katie's going to talk about these a little bit.
Thank you. Before we get to that, I see Counselor Don Hokinson with his hand up.
Thanks. Quick question on the, the sighting there at Revenue Bridge. I noticed constructability is addressed for the pipe routing, but have you looked at constructability there at the, for the outflow there? Is that, or do you have any concerns with the ability to install and get in there, given the private property and other things around the area?
Go back to the one slide, please. This is a good, it's what you're talking about. So we have looked at it just in the field. We haven't done any geotechnical investigations. So this is very much dominated by rock here as well. So what we don't know is how much rock excavation will be needed until we get a geotechnical engineer in there to do information. A good portion of that property is owned and managed by Clackamas County. So there is, there's, there's good opportunity to, to, to partner with Clackamas County within their right of way. And then the parcel that's immediately upstream from the bridge is also owned by Clackamas County. So it looks like there's an opportunity to put infrastructure there on county owned property. So we're making progress, but there still needs to be some geo-geotechnical investigations of the rock in that area.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Katie?
Thanks, Ken. So we evaluated a number of different pipeline options. You can see here, we split these pipelines into two segments. Segment one was from the wastewater treatment facility to the different outfall locations. And segment two is from those different outfall locations on the Sandy River to the outfall at Roslin Lake. Next slide, please. We evaluated each of these options based on a number of different criteria. You can see a handful of the ones that we looked at here. Of course, we looked at cost, environmental effects and impacts to the public as well as what kind of permitting each different pipeline might entail.
Next slide. I'm gonna, can I, can I have you go back to that slide just before that? There, that's, thank you. So I have a lot of experience with the Sandy River, having had bridges and campgrounds and trails wash out stream there. So I have a healthy respect for the Sandy River and what it can do. But what I also have is a real familiarity with the segment one, one B section. That's, that trail, that, that pipeline location goes through our Sandy River Park. And I've built trails down there and done a lot of, of looking at possible trails in that area. And, and that whole area before it gets to Ten Eyck Road there is extremely wet. It's extremely unstable. There's active landslides. While we were building a trail down there, it, we actually ended up with like a 40 foot sinkhole. Because there's underground springs. The Cedar Creek area that you're going to be proposing to cross there is extremely sensitive and also steep and wet and unstable. And I'm just really concerned about that segment one B option as opposed to one C. Because the environmental impacts of, you're going to need to get some sort of a road down there to kind of push pipe underground. And that's, that's our, you know, that's a huge, very important natural area down there. And I'm not sure if anybody has even done, like looked at the LiDAR coverage of that area or done so much on the ground. Ground truthing of kind of what's out there, but I guess I, I'm just very concerned about that potential connection there.
Sure, and this is a really preliminary study. I'm getting a lot of echo, sorry. So yeah, definitely if.
Counselor Walker, it may help if you mute. There you go. I think that'll be good. Thank you.
Thanks. So since it's such a preliminary study, of course, there's going to be more research that will need to be done in order to select the best option. The one that we've chosen so far. Jason, if you want to progress on to that slide. Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, so, well, we can talk about this slide too, but I walked every foot of that alignment and I agree to you that the, there are some challenges with that. Creek crossings. Wetlands and so forth. And that's pretty common, you know, putting pipes, restoring, you know, getting wetland permits, restoring the wetlands and so forth. And we did look at putting in alignment. There are some steep slopes there. As you get closer to the south end of the ODFW property, so alignment was shown more on the more level areas of that, less, less of the steep slopes. So we did look at that and get out of the steep slopes. So yeah, we identified those concerns and permitting that's required. So a lot of the next steps would be to look at more, you know, no prior requirements and also coordinate with ODFW for that site.
Yeah. And as we go along, of course, we'll, you know, have a better idea of what will be the best route for these pipelines. But so far what we found was that option one B presents a better option than one C. Largely because one C ends up having a lot of difficulties since it goes along Highway 26. Which is going to cause a lot of traffic impacts. Obviously there's a trade off there, so it's something to study further. But this is what we selected as the best pipeline from our preliminary studies. Segment two, well, I guess I'll describe where segment one goes along. It does go through Sandy River Park, as was mentioned, and across ODFW land and then onto Ten Eyck Road where you get to the Ten Eyck or the Revenue Bridge outfall. And then segment two there goes up Ten Eyck Road up to Thomas Road and then to the Rosin Lake outfall. So here you can kind of see a cost breakdown of the different options that we looked at. The options highlighted in green are the ones that we selected. As you can see, they are the lowest cost that we that we encountered so far. The, and we kind of already talked about why some of those differences in price came upon between check option one B and option one C. Option two C also got a little bit more expensive. Again, we encountered some very steep slopes that would have been landslide considerations that ultimately would require auger boring in order to install the pipe, which drove up the cost quite a bit. We also include here some additional alternatives that we looked at, including West Clackamas County or Gresham existing wastewater treatment facilities. The prices shown here are not just the pipeline, but also include pumping and buying into those existing treatment facilities. But we found that those are much higher costs than the, these pipelines that we're proposing. And we also looked at a potential option of irrigation up at Council Road and using the recycled water for that purpose. But so far there doesn't seem to be enough of a market need for that recycled water for that cost to be a viable option. I'll turn it back over to Ken.
Okay, thanks, Katie. So Counselor Exner was talking and asking questions about Rosin Lake and opportunity for wetland creation. So let's just talk about Rosin Lake site a little bit. Again, it'd be reminder for many of you and maybe introduction for others. Next slide. This kind of.
Real quick, go back to Katie for a second. Just real quick question, if I can. In terms of the cost analysis that you were looking at, did you also throw into things like purchasing of properties or rights aways?
Yes, absolutely.
Actual physical cost. You did, okay. That's what I need to know.
Okay, so this slide that's shown here is really, it's just a snapshot of temperature on the Sandy River. And even before this project was envisioned, the state of Oregon was studying the Sandy River because the temperatures were higher. They are high on the Sandy River in the summertime and in the fall. And they were exceeding state standards, both water quality standards and also biological standards as well. So knowing that there were some challenges with temperature on the Sandy River made people early on ask, what about land application? What about wetland creation? And I think some of the staff and some of the leadership within the City of Sandy actually asked us to look at Rosin Lake and see if there was an opportunity there. Again, that one of the big drivers was looking at water quality. So many of you know that that property's changed hands. Used to be managed by Portland General Electric when it was Rosin Lake. And then they decommissioned the lake and it's now owned by a private company, Trackers Earth. And their purpose and what they do is environmental education and they teach survival skills and things like that. They're also very interested in conservation and really stewardship of that land that they, that they have there now. And as part of that, they really became interested in talking to the city and teaming with the city to look at the opportunity for doing habitat restoration. So if you go on that site now, and many of you have been there, yes, say on that slide for a second, please. Once they drained the water, there's a lot of impacted land there that's not really quality habitat. And so trackers is very interested in improving that habitat. And one of the things that they need for that is to provide some water. So that effluent, that high quality effluent that comes from the MBR could help to create habitat. And the, the way the vegetation is grown has not been very diverse. If you go out there, you see there's nothing but cottonwoods in, in, in much of that site. And so there's not a lot of ecological niches for various species, you know, just having that monoculture there. So they're very interested in restoration and having more ecological diversity at that site, which makes them a good partner. The city has a letter of understanding with Trackers Earth that allows the city to do investigations on the property and to coordinate with them to again, potentially look at the opportunity of land application. We've done a few things since we talked about this project in September. I'm going to talk about that next, next slide. So from the literature, it would suggest that the soils in that area are very fine grained soils and that it would hold water. And to be really easy to create wetlands. So we decided that we should do some infiltration testing just to check, just to check that theory. And unfortunately, we didn't find that. What we found is the soils were more coarse grain and the water infiltrated very rapidly. So look at this figure. Those kind of areas in blue are the proposed wetlands A and B. And those two little test pit, test bit one and test bit two, those yellow dots, that's where we did some infiltration studies. And we found that the hydraulic conductivity was very high. You could almost not measure the water because it wouldn't stay in those test pits. It would just infiltrate immediately into the soil. So that was interesting, but it's not what we, what we had hoped for or what we were expecting based on the literature review that the geologists did. And so what that tells us is we really need to know more about the site. Next slide. So the geologists have proposed to do more evaluations. Again, this shows where the, the test pits were done and those, those white dots are looking at a new grid pattern that the geologists are proposing to do more soil borings to really start to understand more broadly the Rosin Lake sites and what the capabilities would be. Because as you move into a design of constructed wetlands, we would perhaps have to bring in clay to make sure that infiltration didn't take place too rapidly. Or there might be some clay on site that we could use as well, or we'd have to import clay or look at some other things like that. So we made, you know, again, some progress in understanding the site since September, but there's still more that needs to be learned. The other thing that really needs to be understood is where the existing wetlands are and if they're jurisdictional wetlands or not. So there'll have to be additional studies of vegetation. Counselor Exner was asking about impacts on vegetation and impacts on wetlands. That will be the next steps that need to be done. Need to get wetland scientists out there to do the formal delineations of the existing wetlands. And then working with the resource agencies, if the existing wetlands have poor quality, then the well and agencies may be interested in enhancing those poor quality wetlands. If we find some well and areas that have high quality, they probably would restrict those areas and not allow any effluent to go in these hard quality. So better somebody keep findings, I better wrap this up. So again, particularly in the summer and the fall, when the temperature impacts could be great on the Sandy River. We believe there'd be a good opportunity to take that effluent and create and enhance wetlands at Rosin Lake. Mentioned that we need to do additional soil reviews and wetland reviews. And if we are creating wetlands in the, in the area, then, and or enhancing, there may be some opportunity to get mitigation credit there. So going back to the discussion about the pipeline route. So if the pipeline goes through well and areas over by Cedar Creek and we impact those wetlands, we might be able to do well and creation that could be mitigation for those impacts in other parts of the project.
Sorry to interrupt. I see a hand up from Counselor Don Hokinson.
Okay. So can you just elaborate on the problem with treated sewage water going into the ground? Because that's, you know, old school me, that seems like a perfectly viable subject tank type solution. So, okay, I understand that.
So the, the biggest concern would be potential impacts to groundwater and to drinking water wells or other wells that are being used in the area. So as part of our investigations, we found that there are a lot of those properties that are on wells. And Jason was mentioning the high quality of the wastewater once it comes through the treatment process. But one thing that this process does not remove is nitrogen. You can see there was a very high concentration or reasonably high concentration of nitrogen that were left. That nitrogen can turn into nitrate and that potentially cause problems with ingestion, especially for infants. It causes something called blue baby disease. So it's mostly the impacts of groundwater that would be of concern in terms of infiltrating the water right away. The other thing is that doesn't really do anything to help Trackers Earth in terms of them wanting to have diverse vegetation and have wetland areas. If that water was put on there and it all went away, you know, again, it's not creating the kind of habitat that Trackers Earth is interested in. So it's not really the right solution here. It's unlikely that DQ would give a permit for that type of land application as well. Because they would be concerned about groundwater impacts.
We, we can allow some infiltration into the ground, but it has to be, you know, that can be anti degradation studies of the groundwater in the area based on the effluent and so forth and the probability of soils.
Counselor Walker?
So I'm gonna go on the record here that for Jordan, that, you know, we've done a bunch of great coordination about this project with our watershed councils. We've done almost no coordination with the Parks Board, of which I was on for 20 some years. So I really think that if we're proposing to put a major wastewater line through the middle of our largest park and open space, that it's, we owe them some, some, some involvement there. On another note, I guess I am very, I can very concerned about that because all that land moves around a lot down there. I live right above it, so I know, you know, I look at it every day and I, and I'm familiar with the ground too. And I guess my concern is that first of all, what is the, you know, are you building road to bring the pipe in to put the pipe along there? Are you flying the pipe in? What are the impacts from putting that pipe across all that ground? As opposed to just putting it down the road. I, I understand the, I agree with the rationale not to go down 26, but we've got Pleasant Street that we could be putting it down to get to Ten Eyck. There's some other options there, I guess, that would deal with the Highway 26 issue. So my concern is the impacts of putting that down there through Sandy River Park and across Cedar Creek. So my concern is the impacts of putting that down there through Sandy River Park and across Cedar Creek. And then again, you know, these things break and then then you have to try to go figure out where the leak is and try to repair them. And that seems like a real difficult thing to do when, you know, supposedly you don't have roads down to it. And then you have to kind of go back and and re-impact the area. So just a little thoughts on those, please.
Yep, very valid concerns. We'll do, you know, we haven't done geotechnical investigations in that area. Do geotechnical investigations, confirm, you know, what the soil conditions, ground conditions are. If there are issues, it may create a situation where it is more costly to go through that area. And the road, road option could be a better option. But based on the information we have at this point, looking at cost, traffic impacts and other things, that was the, that was a, yeah, seem to be a viable option. But there is for more investigations that needed, so.
Yeah, I'll I'll jump in here and answer a couple of questions. You know, these large, complex, multi-phase projects are, well, one, it's a management challenge. It's also a technical challenge. It's a funding challenge. It's a decision making challenge too. And at this stage in this project, alternative discharge, we we start off with like looking at the feasibility of some of these options and what the alternatives are. It's quite conceivable that we go down the path with further technical studies. We're going to bring on a program manager for these future phases of the MBR and outfall. And as they get into these, you know, on the ground studies of looking at, you know, the soil conditions and these pipeline routes, it plans could change. And that happens, you know, that's why we're really careful about, and you'll see some numbers later in in the slide, but you know, putting budgets on things because things can change as we learn more about the information. Certainly, as we get into that with the program manager, we've been talking about the the type of public involvement we need to get in these decisions. You know, but at this phase, it's such a technically, is this feasible, you know, sort of question? And then if it is, okay, now is it still the right decision, you know? And does is it still technical once we start, you know, peeling the onion back and looking at, okay, what's the risk of landslides and things like that? You know, speaking about the parks, one of the things I think they'll be interested in, what we've been trying to set up, Matt and I, is a meeting with the BLM folks and the Cedar Fish Hatchery to see if we can do some kind of trail construction as part of this project. If we're going to be down there, you know, laying pipe and and constructing, you know, through through the woods and stuff, is there a way to extend a trail network at the same time after we're done? But, you know, that's just something that maybe can be an add-on part of the project. So I I totally agree. I think all those bodies need to be involved. I think, you know, we've had the watershed councils involved with this sort of one, you know, sharing information as the as it comes out. But the next level be, you know, we need to meet with all the property owners down there. If this is feasible, if the council wants to continue to go this direction, the people that live around the bridge, the people that are going to be on the pipeline route. There is, there would be just incredible amount of work that would be between now and 2027. That will, the public will be involved and communicated with. Next, Matt.
Sounds good. Thanks. Just quickly, you know, as Katie mentioned, we did, as part of the study, looked at irrigation. I've had discussion and interest in that. Unfortunately, there's relatively limited opportunity for additional irrigation use of the effluent. And then Roslyn Lake seems to be the best land application option for the area. We also looked at hyper discharge, which basically involves discharging the effluent into the gravels around the river. And as as Ken mentioned, there's the gravels tend to move as the river fluctuates and so forth. So that was not a viable option. And one thing we did look at too at the project was opportunities for hydro power. Looks quite promising. They can have a revenue source from hydro power from the effluent coming from a high elevation in the city going down to the river, using that head to generate power.
Before you take off on the next step, I just wanted to see if you confirm you've had a chance to talk to, in terms of irrigation. I was contacted by the Mountain View Golf Course, which is just a mile or so beyond where we are doing it now with the. Very interested in seeing if there was some possibility of receiving some of our outflow. Have you had a chance to discuss that with them? Or if that's something that has been investigated at all, or that's something that's the future?
I don't, I'm not, don't recall if they contacted the golf course. We did look at other private property owners, you know, with, you know, farm, various farm use. And we did look for opportunities along the pipeline route. So we weren't spending a lot of money extending another pipe, you know, some long distance from where we were already heading with the pipe. So there are some irrigation opportunities along the pipe route, but it's again, it's it's only a portion of the flow. So it can help relieve some of that or some use of that, you know, kind of a beneficial use of it. But you just can't, there's even a golf course, you can only irrigate so much, right? You can't send all of it to there because you just, we talked to one land use. I think it was the, it's right next to, as Carney's property. And they said basically they they have to drain their property to even farm it. And they never done that. It just stays so wet during the year. So DQ doesn't let you discharge water onto areas where it can't handle it. So but we could definitely look into that.
There are, there are cities who have actually created golf courses. And I know that the city of Redmond, for example, that's something they, Primeville, excuse me. That's what had gone in. And those are the kind of things that every little bit helps, so.
Yep, absolutely. Yep, what we're looking at, we did look at opportunities along the pipe route. Or if there's others nearby, you know, we can get the flow to them. Yep.
Counselor Exner, I'm gonna go play that course in about a month if you want to come join, buddy. Go check it out.
Let me know, buddy. I'm I'm ready. I haven't played golf for about six months.
Sounds good.
All right. So, you know, based on the work we've done, updated the costs. I can see the satellite plant is about 20 million, pipeline 12 million, sand outfall about a half and the destructive wetlands at at Roslyn Lake about five million. In addition, the existing plant and the collection system about 12 and a half million. So the total at this point is about 58 and a half million. This is a bit more than what was shown in the facility plan, the master plan that was done a couple of years ago. Some of that's based on additional cost of existing waste or true plant. And also addition of the Roslyn Lake wetlands wasn't necessarily included in the in the initial planning. So just in summary, the overall goal for the detailed discharge alternative evaluation is further assess the discharge alternatives, talked about irrigation, land application. Roslyn Lake seems to be the most viable option there. We looked at discharge at other true plants in the region and also assess the pipeline routing alternative to the various discharge options. We created, prepared a basic design report for the satellite plant and the pump station and further developed the planning level concepts that were outlined in the in the master plan. So again, we assess the feasibility of these initial concepts and further concept development to update the costs. And this all had to happen before more, you know, permitting and then getting the preliminary designs as as Jordan mentioned. So based on that, the next steps is do some additional investigation at Roslyn Lake site as as Ken mentioned. Confirm pipe routing concepts. Similar to what Counselor Walker was talking about, has talked to property owners, confirm their willingness to provide easements. And there's other things need to be done there as far as confirming the route. Confirm MBR sighting and layout concepts. And then there's climate environmental permitting required for the overall project. So one of the early, the next steps come up soon is environmental permitting and then eventually construction permitting. And then went through that process, preliminary final designs, and then construction over the next handful of years. That will open up to any other questions.
Great presentation. Thank you to everyone. There were a lot of questions during the presentation, but is there any questions before we move forward in our agenda? Counselor Hokinson.
Just quick, in your budgets, what kind of contingencies built into? Obviously, all these studies are going to find things. At what point do those costs go up?
There's a contingency built into that. It's a like a class five estimate. I think it's plus 50% minus 30% is the kind of the range.
Thank you. Counselor Pete Sol.
Yeah, thanks for the presentation. One of the things I heard that made me a little nervous was the part about adding water to the Sandy River, even in the deepest part of it, that we may be restricted on how much water would be able to go into the Sandy River in the summertime. And I think that's our problem currently right now is the summertime is the lowest for all streams around, even with the Tickle Creek. And that's our, we don't have any, we don't have as big of problems currently in the winter times. So are we just creating a short term fix in this, even with the Roslyn Lake aspect of it? Are we going to be producing more water than Roslyn can take even during those summer months that we would have? And would we try to go for a permit that would allow us to to maximize the amount of water that we could put in the Sandy River in case the same, the in that particular area where it was safe? In case that Roslyn were to fall through one, but you know, what some of these things is, I've learned from being a council for just a little bit of time, is that some of these things can be 50 years out when it comes to permitting, whether it's water rights on the Salmon River that we've owned forever but can't use or if it is, you know, discharging treated wastewater. So I guess that's my question is, I'm a little bit skeptical or concerned about what we will run into during those summer months with what I heard. Can you speak to that?
Mm hmm. Yeah, Ken, I can start and then I'll let you jump in.
Hey.
That sound good? So what we found is, you know, temperature is the big concern with discharging the Sandy River. And so during the summer months, we calculated that we can discharge nearly all of the effluent even to build out to Ross Lake. And as Ken laid out, there's, you could phase Roslyn Lake work into, here's some initial wetlands for the next 10, 20 years. And then beyond that, you could add another wetland. So there's quite a bit of capacity to handle the summertime flows at Roslyn Lake. And it awfully actually provides the most flexibility for the city moving forward because of the capacity at Ross Lake to discharge during the summer. The build out flows, the ability for Roslyn Lake for some infiltration, some evaporation, some use by the plants and the and the just the area to take those summertime flows and to build out. And then during the, in the winter time months, as Ken mentioned, there's higher flow on the Sandy River. Temperatures, you know, the the amount of wastewater going in the river compared to the flow on the river is very small percentage wise. So the temperature impacts are come under the threshold of, you know, relative to DQ requirements.
Okay, so I didn't, I guess I didn't get that out of the presentation, that Roslyn Lake could take our maximum flow, you know, 10 or 20 or 30 years into the future. Because I I guess I'm building, wanting to build a sewer treatment system that will at least last 50 plus years, not like our last one, but realize and not do the same thing we just did, learn from what we've done and the growth that we're experiencing here in Oregon in our region to be able to confidently say that we will have the rights 50 years from now. Because that's what we are building for.
Yep. I think that you need to really embrace both opportunities. Opportunity discharge to the Sandy River and opportunity to discharge to land. And Roslyn Lake makes sense because that's an area that's available. I think that provides the city with a robust treatment and effluent disposal area long into the future. You know, that it's a challenge for any community to find out what do they do with their treated sewage? You know, you you can't pick a community up and put it near the Columbia River so you could discharge in the Columbia River, which has, you know, greater capacity. But in this case, the largest stream that would be able to take effluent is the Sandy River. And I mentioned that like on looking at monthly flows, there's about 99% of the flow would be natural flow from the Sandy River and 1% or less than 1% would be from the treatment plant. And during most of the season, as a community grows, that river has enough capacity to take all those flows and those discharges, but not in the summer and in the fall because of the temperature on the Sandy River and the temperature of the effluent. So I think it would be short sighted to focus all the city's attention on one or the other option to try to somehow land apply all of it to Roslyn Lake because the site doesn't have the area to take the flows now and in the future at Roslyn Lake. And I also believe the Sandy River doesn't have the ability to take all the flows during all the seasons. And as a community grows, I think a combination of discharge to the Sandy River and discharge to land at Roslyn Lake is the most robust option that the city has. And I think that would fully serve the city now and into the future. You know, maybe some technology will change. I don't know what's going to happen in 50 years. But I do think, thinking about this from a long term point of view is super important. I think that's the the really good questions you ask because it's going to be a very expensive project. You want to serve the community for many years. And I think this dual discharge is the best opportunity that the city has.
Yep, provides, as I mentioned, the best, most flexibility moving forward because you can still discharge and things can again, some of the some of the water to the sandy in the summer, but not all of it. So you could be splitting, in the summer, you could be splitting the flows between the two discharge points, right? Minimizing impact to the sandy and then still leveraging the Roslyn Lake site as much as you can.
Thank you. Before I go to Counselor Exner, Rob, did you have a quick follow up to that conversation?
Yeah, I just want to, I think the the thing that the city faced, what, 25 years ago, with the last facility plan update, the the city was faced with this exact same question of, do we stay in Clackamas and Tickle Creek? Or do we go to Sandy and try to get a year round discharge permit? And and back then, the decision was so close, but it was, hey, let's keep the status quo and stay in Tickle Creek. And the permit only allowed the city to discharge to Tickle Creek in the winter time. And that's where the city's in the current predicament that they are now. Everything around this project is contingent on getting a year round discharge to the Sandy River. And that's key, I think, to address your your comment, Counselor Pete Sol, is all about, hey, that that gives the city the flexibility you're looking for and the long term solution. So I just wanted to highlight that point.
All right, thank you. Let's go to Counselor Exner and then Walker.
Okay. Yeah, I guess I'm very impressed by the presentation. Thank you for doing such a great job. I really liked what's going on. The balance seems pretty strong. Now that I've said that, either you have evaluated and and got rid of or you haven't looked at some other options. And I and I am also concerned as Council Pete Sol about what we can do for the next 25, 35, 45 years. Don't want to be in the same boat. Be doing it in 2050 or something. I I wonder if if you could discuss a little bit about how you've looked at other options of dealing with the winter time runoff. Seems like we still are in the mode of saying that we have a lot of water entering our sewer system that is from outside the sewer situations, so stormwater, rainwater, road water, all those kind of things. It seems to me that we, when we were doing the green study here. Jordan, I forget, three years ago, four years ago, maybe whatever time it was, maybe it was before your time even, that we were talking about finding ways to deal with environmentally sound stormwater issues and trying to get those add-ons in the winter, excuse me, winter time that just we have become the the biggest problems that we have is trying to figure out how to. But from I and I, so have we looked at those things and disregarded those? Have we talked about incorporating some of that into this plan? I know we've got pipeline fixes that we got into the loans and things from DEQ, but surely we could find a way to reduce some of that winter time input. What's the, just real quickly, what's the status of that?
Rob, do you want to give an update on the collection system? Councilor Exner, are you looking, are you looking for a question? Or maybe your question is about what other alternatives are we looking at besides, you know, the collection system, I and I improvements? You know, are you talking about education campaigns? You know, I guess things that are beyond what was looked at in the facilities plan for addressing the, the inflow and infiltration?
It's, it's a bigger picture and it's also out of the box kind of picture. And we have just from, as long as I've been on council, we have talked about how the winter time input into our sewer system has just been a real pain in the last fifteen years now. It seems like it's just become bigger and bigger. And it appears as if the current plan that we're talking about going to Roslyn Lake just accepts the fact that we are going to continue to have tremendous increases in the winter time compared to the summertime. And I get the part that you can't stop at all, but it seems to me that we have not figured out how to deal with that inflow from our stormwater drainwater kind of situations. And there's a lot of mix of things of how to do that, you know, we've, are we, have we looked at wetlands within the Clackamas watershed? We've got several wetlands that we may be able to put some of that money and outflow into. You know, how do we deal with correcting all the INI problems that we still are supposed to be working at? What's? Have we looked at other options? And why are we still looking at a huge increase in the winter time? And I'm looking at long term dealing with our problems. So we don't have to deal with a brand new plant in twenty-five years again, so.
Yeah, I can talk a little bit to that and apologize for the background music, but it's hard to get my thirteen year old to practice. So when he does, I just want him to keep going. So the city of Sandy during the Oregon DEQ regulates around the five year twenty-four hour wet weather event. So the five year storm. It happens once on, on average, every, once every five years. In that occurrence, the city sees like a peaking factor of at least nine to one, which means your wastewater flows go from one million gallons per day to nine million gallons per day. A typical system will probably see somewhere from two to four. So you, the city's collection system experiences a tremendous amount of clean water getting in to the system. And there's a lot of different reasons for that. I think the city has a separated system. So unlike, like the city of Portland or Corvallis or some other communities where their stormwater is designed to go into the system, the city of Sandys is meant to transport or convey just wastewater. The problem is all this clean water has found its way to get in just through time, age, defects in the pipe, the way the pipes were constructed. So all that to say, this current collection system work that the city's embarking in this year is to address the two worst basins in the city. It's around forty percent of that not peaking factor of nine comes from these two basins. So we're looking to try to hit, reduce those flows this year. Future phases, not in the next ten years, but future phases do recommend in the facility plan, keep working on the collection system. It's like our roofs, right? We can, we can fix some leaking portions of it, but over time it's going to continue to leak. We can't replace it all. It costs way too much. And so this is just the first phase of ongoing recommendations to address the collection system.
Yeah, you're, you're not catching my question. It looks to me like we are just accepting the fact that we will continue to have tremendous increases, except from one million to nine million increases throughout time. It just seems to be unacceptable to me. It seems to me we have other cities, you just described several others. We have figured out a way to reduce that. And I understand old systems, old pipes, things that are just not working right, but, and I don't want to, don't go into detail. Because this is not the time to solve the problems, but it just seems like we have not analyzed some out of the box, what to do with this winter time inflow. And I think that we seem to be missing the point, missing a boat, a possible way of solving this problem in the winter time that we seem to continually get. And we're not thinking about those kinds of solutions. And it sounds like Murray Smith has not figured that into their system. They've just planned on having us have tremendous amount of excessive water influence sewer system throughout perpetuity. Is that right?
I, you know, I would think the, the best way to answer that quickly at a high level is the facility plan looked at the extreme options. One is get everything that wants to get into the collection system and get down to the treatment plant and treat it all. The other extreme was, in essence, rebuild the collection system and make it as watertight as possible. And, and on those extremes came very, very high costs. And so the, the twenty nineteen facility plan identified what was going to be the lowest cost option, kind of the balance point of doing both, trying to reduce the clean water and treats. So that at the high level is where the current wastewater program plan is at. I think, Councilor Exner, you're talking about other solutions to try to reduce waste, like the wet weather flows. And I hear you. I don't know if there are proven solutions out there. There's, this is kind of a big problem. It's why our wastewater systems are just given a D plus in terms of our grade as a nation. Corvallis, for instance, Salem, they have wet weather treatment facilities, like a whole separate facility just to treat wet weather flows, because they haven't figured out the problem either. So I think this is probably worth like a little bit more exploration. Maybe offline outside of the council to talk about what other possible solutions are, are out there. But right now there, it's not a, there's no widely accepted alternative to what the, the city is currently embarking on.
It's an answer that is barely unsatisfying. It just seems like there are other cities dealing with that, but for the moment, to save time. And let's, I would agree, let's do some off the virtual meeting conversations about that. Thanks.
We'll see, we'll see how we deal with the, you know, we're, the contractors, Oxbow is going to be starting that work now this month and you know, we'll be tracking the flows and see, you know, what kind of benefit we get through this I and I work, tightening our pipes and fixing those leaks and see what kind of return we get on this investment in, in this first basin eight and two and basin two. So I mean, Councilor Exner, it is a, in the facilities mind is the priority. It's the I and I work and then the existing improvements or the improvements to the existing treatment plant, which are both, you know, we have contractors on board, project, the work's getting underway to be completed by the end of the year to really address that, the flow issue.
All right, Councilor Exner.
What, Walker? Well, no, no, I want Pearl to go again. Brilliant slip there. I, I, I'm just gonna, first of all, thank you for this great presentation. It's an elephant sized project and you've got new counselors to kind of help explain it to us. I appreciate all the efforts. That was real helpful. I did not get my answers, my questions answered about the impacts of how you get these pipes over kind of, you know, sensitive wetlands and things like that. I would just ask if you could please, one of your engineers, please send us just, and I, and I get that there's, you know, what we say when we build trail is you gotta break a few eggs to make the omelet. So I can appreciate that, you know, things can kind of look really bad and then you kind of go fix it up and, and restore it and stuff. But I would like, if you could please send us just some pictures of, of sample projects of where pipe was put in and the area was restored and, and how that works and what kind of equipment gets involved in that. If you could just send that out after, you know, separately from the meeting, I appreciate it so that we can probably get on with the rest of our meeting agenda, not be here till eleven PM. Thanks.
All right, great. Any further questions? Are we able to move forward? All right. Well, thank you, everybody, for your presentations this evening. This was very informative with some great questions and continues to be our top priority here in Sandy. So thank you. Really appreciate your time tonight.
Welcome, Mayor.
Thank you.
All right, moving ahead, we'll go ahead and go to our consent agenda. Unless there's further discussion, I will entertain a motion to adopt.
I'll make a motion that we accept our consent agenda.
And we have a motion from Councilor Sheldon. The first hand up I saw was Councilor Smallwoods for the second. All those in favor signify by saying aye or giving a thumbs up. Aye. Opposed, a nay or a thumb stand. Motion carries. Moving into old business, wastewater rate model update. Jordan?
Hey, thank you, Mayor. So continuing the theme of wastewater, this item, I think will generate additional conversation and thoughts and questions about our wastewater system improvements project. I'm going to introduce Doug Gabbert with FCS Group, who will be giving the update on the wastewater rate model. As council recalls, I think it was in November that we presented the updated rate model. That model, I think, was first developed by FCS probably a year before, you know, the, the prior year, when the first rate increases went into effect. Or as we're working on that, going into effect for this wastewater project. Tonight, you'll notice this theme. So we introduced the discharge alternatives evaluation that was really focused on the work that Murray Smith did and looking at those alternatives and, and of course, Roslyn Lake. We're now talking more about how we're going to pay for that future work, but also the work that we're currently doing. And, and we're kind of, going to start with the rate model and the funding plan. And then the next items on your agenda are some of those tools and mechanisms that we're going to be doing to actually then put the model into effect by paying for it through loans and, and obligations. So this was an update of that, that rate model that we presented. You'll notice there is some changes and that's really just, again, these projects are big, they're fluid, as more information comes in through the engineers, through, you know, learning more about what the current rates are. Of course, we received the great news about being invited to submit for the WIFI program. So that is now built into our base assumption in the rate model. And so that, that, all those things kind of fed into being able to update this model. Now, of course, there's a six months delay from deferring the rate increase due to coronavirus pandemic. So that plays a, a role into the, the funds, revenue collections. But I'm not going to go into further detail, let Doug do that. But we also, at the end of this presentation, will have a short presentation from Kevin Hanway, who is a consultant that is working with the city on our WIFI application. Kevin was very helpful in the letter of interest for the city and he's working with the team. I include staff, other consultants, our financial advisor on submitting that, that application. So we appreciate his help and I think be helpful for the council just to hear about more, more about what is this WIFI thing? Why is it a, you know, a good deal for the city? And why we're excited about it. But first, I'll turn it over to Doug to, to give his presentation. And I think most of you will remember Doug from prior presentations.
And I hope it was a good memory. Mayor and council, it's wonderful to be with you once again.
Doug, I apologize for interrupting off the bat. Looks like Councilor Hokinson has a quick question.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that we're all listening to this for the right purpose. So this is for information and feedback, not for decision today, right?
That's correct. Yeah. So this is giving you the information. Here's, you know, the latest when we put in these numbers, this is what it spit out. This is the current funding plan. We'll be bringing this back to the council for a public hearing and then adoption to implement rates.
Great. Well, I am Doug Gabbert with FCS Group. I am joined by my analyst, Zach Hazel. We last spoke with you on November sixteenth, and so this will give us an opportunity tonight to just really emphasize the things that have changed and why they've changed and maybe a little less, little less detail, so we can help you move along through your agenda this evening. Can everyone see my slide and my moving cursor? All right, I see thumbs up. Let's go for it. The key assumptions in our analysis have not changed. You're seeing almost nothing here that is different from what you saw on November sixteenth. With the exception that in the operating forecast, we are making use of actual year to date data that has become available. So that makes things a little more accurate. Your annual growth rate of two point eight percent per year for your customer base is also not a change. It continues to be what we believe is, is likely to be true, but it is a point of risk. And so we just want to point out that that is a high growth rate. And so you want to continue to monitor it. We, we still believe it's the right number, but you want to make sure that, that you're watching that and making sure that that growth shows up. Now, moving on to things that have changed, this is the current picture of the capital needs forecast. We're showing about a hundred and twenty-seven million dollars in total capital projects. And that's about twenty-ish million dollars more than what we showed you last time. Roslyn Lake being one of the, the big drivers is now in the capital plan. And we have done an alternate scenario where we know what the needed rate increases would be if we did not have that in our capital plan. But it is there and we have a total capital plan of about a hundred and twenty-seven million dollars over the twenty year forecast period. So that is one of two important changes in all of the moving parts for the rate model. Capital funding assumptions are largely not changed. The dollars are slightly bigger because of the additional capital, but how they are distributed among the WIFI loan, revenue bonds, the SRF loan, that is all largely the same as it was before. So on this slide, you'll, you'll see kind of the, the rate increases that are currently being looked at. Starting with the beginning of next fiscal year, which would be July first, we're calling for a fifteen percent increase plus a couple of fourteen percenters each year for the next couple of years. And that's really having to do with the, the debt service required by the, the additional debt to pay for the additional capital cost. But also importantly is this idea of coverage. So the second important change we made in the rate model was accounting for the kind of debt service coverage that WIFI wants to see. And so we took a, a coverage ratio of one point five and we applied it to the WIFI alone because that's going to make it easier to get good terms. And that's the kind of coverage that WIFI wants to see. Now, you, this may be refresher for all of you, but just, just for the sake of, of reminding everybody, so coverage means that your creditor expects you to earn net revenues, meaning revenues minus operating expenses in excess of the debt service that you have to pay. And so one point five means that your net revenues need to be one point five your debt service payments. Well, what that means is you have this money that you technically don't need to spend on operations, because that's already been deducted out. And so you have it available for capital spending, because capital is not included in the coverage calculation. You have this money that you can spend on capital as well as debt service. And so when you have coverage ratios, you have money available for capital in addition to debt service. And so you find yourself reaching this equilibrium where you're not funding all of your capital through debt, but you're also funding at least some of it through rates, which is what would happen with these rate increases. And so you're, you're going to find as, as you notice some of these, the, the top section of each bar here, you, you find a section of, of rate funded capital. And it might occur to you to ask, well, gosh, could we mitigate rate increases just by borrowing all of the capital cost? And because of coverage, the answer to that is no, you do need to have some mix of cash funded and, and debt funded so that you can maintain the coverage that your creditors need. So these are the, these are the rate increases that we're calling for. They are a little higher than, and also shifted a year from the last time that we talked in November. The highest one before was thirteen percent. So it's slightly higher.
Doug, you have a question from Councilor Smallwood?
Yes.
Yeah, Doug, so just a quick question is, are these percentage increases, are they based off of our current population or do they incorporate any growth at all?
Great question. They do reflect growth. Furthermore, they reflect growth at two point eight percent per year. If that growth does not show up, you will need higher rate increases.
Okay, thank you.
You bet. This is, this is the, the graph of fund balances that you have seen before. This is the kind of, this is kind of proves that we This is the kind of, this is kind of proves that we, we did all the math right. What you, you want to see distinct pinch points where your fund balance is drawn down. And, and then you see that after the last pinch point, and this is, this is kind of where the WIFIya, this is the neighborhood where the WIFIya borrowing happens and the big projects happen. And then cash balances, it looks like cash balances begin to creep up. But that's, you know, remember that's, that's 10 years from now. And so more projects will be articulated by then. And so I don't, I don't necessarily really expect these big balances to ever really materialize. But that's the way it looks based upon the current, the current plan. And you'll notice by the time you get out there, there are no rate increases either. So it's not like we're calling for rate increases to build up the cash balance. That's just the way the math is working right now. So here's what rates will look like. Starting in the next fiscal year, starting July 1st, 2021, the residential base fee will, should go up to $23.70 with $6.08 per CCF with the outside flat rate of $85.49 and the rest of the rate schedule as shown here. And that's reproduced for 10 years of rate increases out to the right. 15%, 14% and, and so on, as was seen on the revenue requirement graph. So this is going to put you, put you a little higher in the, in the, in the conference standings. I don't think this comes as any surprise to anyone, but, but do keep in mind, we're kind of active in these areas. We know that other, other agencies are always thinking about their water and sewer rates. And so you won't be the only one who is moving. I promise you that. I promise to keep it short. That's the highlights. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Do my taking down the slide?
Taking down the slide?
Oh, I guess we can keep it open for questions. It's just harder for me to see, but that's fine. Let's use our raised hand button if, if any councillors have any questions.
And I am happy to take down the slides at any point.
Oh, it might help actually with questions, Doug. I see a hand up from Councilor Walker.
Yeah, I think I saw this presentation a while back. I don't know if I was on the council at the time, but going back to your early slide, I thought I saw that the, I thought I recall the total cost of this whole thing was 68 million or 65, 68, something like that. And now I'm seeing we're up to 86.8 million. And I kind of was, maybe it's late, but I was like, how did we, you know, and, and something about the Roslyn Lake wetlands? And all this, you know, I, I'm just kind of concerned that all of a sudden we've hardly gone very long at all and we're already seeing a $20 million increase in this project cost. Could anybody kind of give me some insights on that? Or maybe, maybe not an increase, I don't know.
No, it's a great question, Councilor Walker, because the Roslyn Wetlands is supposed to be cheaper and not more expensive. Yeah.
Yeah. So the explanation there is, so when the facilities plan was completed, the facilities plan looked at, you know, these four project components and the, you know, the, the direction was to build an MBR plant and then an outfall into the Sandy River. The baseline on that was a pipeline. I think that we just heard from Murray Smith, but when they presented it, it was just a pipeline from the MBR right into the Sandy River and it was a year-round discharge. And the caveat there was that, of course, we need to do additional studies. Could we even do that? What's DEQ going to say? How do we permit that? We need to do these discharge alternatives to figure out, you know, what are the temperature impacts? Do we need to mitigate them? And it still could be true that Roslyn is cheaper, right, than doing chillers to cool the, the wastewater. You know, it's cheaper than the alternative building of massively new, you know, treatment plant that would still have the problems of Tickle Creek. But, you know, this is probably more of an issue of just communicating project costs and, and, you know, how these things change over time and more, if we get better information. But this is, so basically Roslyn Lake wasn't a known, you know, project idea when the facility span was done. And that's where that number of 68 million was. And maybe we, you know, presentation should have included that project costs would go up if we need to mitigate temperature through chillers or through other means that, you know, would cost money. Now, to say that, so, you know, that, well, I was going to-
That, but we, I'm sorry to interrupt, Jordan, but, but we knew that. I mean, we talked, we talked at length at that very first meeting. I wasn't even a Mary yet about the fact that pumping uphill creates friction, which creates heat, which creates, you know, issues. And it was 60 to 80 million dollars was the ballpark range. And Kathleen's point, we're, we're now sitting here just two years later and we're already, we're already past the 280 million range. So it's kind of, it's a little eye-opening. Yeah.
Yeah. And these, again, these numbers will change. They absolutely will. I mean, you know, some of this is escalation costs, you know, over time that you add and as you get different assumptions and stuff. I mean, this is a, it's always a tough public communications thing with these projects because the project costs change, like, you know, monthly. So as soon as a number goes out there, that becomes a number that everybody gets latched on to. And then five years later, you're like, well, 6% construction cost, you know, escalation over five years. So we're always, you know, a little concerned about, you know, putting numbers out and because for these very reasons. But the, what I was going to say is, so, you know, the, this, this rate model assumes that Roslyn Lake would be the temper, a temperature mitigation strategy, which very well, very well might be, like, it seems like there's a lot of, you know, interest, a lot of consultants say that, that seems like a sound strategy to mitigate that, those impacts in the future. That may be what DEQ agrees with. But there's also, you know, other things that we can look at. You know, and, you know, is there just other alternatives that we can do in the meantime to not have to pay for the Roslyn Lake, you know, constructed by wetlands the next five years, but maybe in the next 10 or 20, we start doing that work. And so that's one thing that is sort of the next steps that we didn't really talk about with the Murray Smith work is next steps is really the permitting, you know, is, is talking to DEQ about what is going to be needed. What are they going to need to see what kind of data, but also these options to mitigate the impacts of the river that would be written into a permit. So it could be Roslyn Lake. It could be other things that we should look at. Similar to what we just looked at with alternatives to the Sandy, we should spend a little bit of time thinking about any other alternatives that we might be able to do for temperature impacts for very reasons like project costs and just trying to make sure that we exhaust all options. But the other thing is 127 is a big eye-opening number two, but this is for the full horizon of the project, which we talk about the facilities plan and the work ahead of us. That is only Phase 1A and 1B. There's, you know, future phases that were outlined in that, that report that really incorporates, you know, just things that you're going to need to do in the next decade or two, in addition to the work ahead of us in five years. So that's, you know, that's the explanation.
And I like to add, I'd like to add in to amplify just one, one really critical thing that, that Jordan said is if you're comparing the numbers I'm showing you with the capital improvement plan or project list, our numbers are going to be higher for one reason, that is cost escalation. So because we're interested in annual cash flows and making sure that you don't have a negative fund balance in every specific year, we escalate project costs to the year of their expenditure so that we have a realistic sense of what's going to get spent. And you won't necessarily get that in a CIP. Things will tend to be current year costs.
Thank you. Councilor Hokinson.
Thanks. Can we go to slide five, please?
Slide five.
So we're talking about $127, that's 127 million in capital. And you talked about this, this margin that we have to maintain in terms of money, capital that we're raising. Can you tell us underneath this curve, the top curve, is the whole, everything under the top curve represents 127 million or?
Sure. I went, I went quickly over this. And so I'm going to, I'm going to take your question as an excuse to do a little more justice to this. So these, these stacked columns are columns of cost. At the bottom layer, you have cash operating expenses. The next layer that stays kind of small is existing debt service. The next layer, very important, is new debt service. So all of the new debt that we have talked about, the SRF loan, the WIFIya loan, the revenue bonds. So that is all this color and you see how these grow. That's new debt service. The final color above that, and I hesitate to even put a name to some of these colors because you guys are probably looking at a different shade than I am. This is the, what's above that is money in excess of what is technically needed on a cash flow basis for debt service, but is needed to maintain coverage. And it is there, because it's needed to maintain coverage, it is therefore available to do some project spending out of rate money.
So how much money over those 20 years is in the yellow? What's the millions?
I, I, I could not eyeball it for you looking at this, but that is-
Let me ask the question differently. Then does that suggest, going back to Carl's point from the previous presentation of we want to build one final sewage plant to rule them all? With what you're saying and suggesting here, we're much better building off in an interim sort of way and using this gold money to pay for future improvements rather than biting it all off at once. We should be paying for stuff we don't need right now, is what I'm saying.
The, the gold, the gold money is accounted for in the sense that when, when you have, when you have coverage requirement, you trade off, you need to optimize the balance between cash spending and debt funding because, you know, debt allows you to delay payment, but the coverage require, a coverage requirement requires you to earn money you don't technically need. And so you have to balance those two things. So in, in, it's part of our job to make sure that these are balanced so that if, if you went more into debt funding, you would actually need higher rate increases. Or if you went more into cash funding, you would need higher rate increases. We have, we have struck the balance that minimizes rate increases.
But are we actually banking money to pay for the expansion from our three-bedroom house to a four-bedroom house?
I'm, okay. So banking money is, comes to the question of fund balance. So this chart shows you what you have in the bank after, at the end of each fiscal year. So for example, in 2024, it sure looks like you have a lot, but the reality is, is that this is part of borrowing that is not spent in the same year. So it gets drawn down immediately the next year. You really don't start building up anything until after 2030. That's when the major spending is, is done. And so, and, and by that time, the rate increases are all over anyway. So, so we, we have tried to, to optimize this to make sure that the pinch points reflect kind of the end of the needed rate increases, if that makes sense. I'm not sure I'm answering-
No, no, you've answered the question. Thank you. My point is that if we don't need capacity in the system until 2040, we shouldn't pay for it in 2020 because we'll have 30 million towards it in 2040.
I'm not, I'm not sure I follow that.
So you, we've got this range of 86 million plus or minus 50% of what this thing's going to finally cost us, right? We have decisions to make about, do we build wetlands now? Do we build a little wetland now and then expand it 10 years from now and so forth? What I'm seeing is there's a, even though a lot of us would just want to build what we need now for the future, there's, there's good justification for delaying additional capacity until it is needed.
Okay.
That's, that's-
Right. So that's a fair statement. So our, our, our balancing of the model, our balancing of the rate increases versus the coverage needed versus the debt that's available to us, all of that balancing happens after we have a capital plan. And so this capital plan is taken as given. So this is a foundational assumption. If you start playing with the cash flows shown here, you start pushing this into the future, then of, yes, the financial plan will look different. I think that is, that is to your point, councillor.
No, so, so I, no, it's not actually.
I'm sorry.
My point is that as we start heading into this project, the cat, this forecast is based on that 86.8. That becomes a target we have to hold to. As we encounter decisions to, well, we could do this, we could do that. If we can delay it and still meet our capacity needs, this model holds. Because 15 years from now, we're going to have a bunch of money to put towards, to that and hold to this rate model. I think that's the key that I'm here, taking away is that that number, even though we got this plus or minus 50%, we're just going to be really careful to hold to that number and make some trade-offs if we have to.
Yep.
That was it. Thank you.
Thank you. Further questions? Uh, councillor Pete Sol.
Yeah, I was just curious on the, because we didn't do a rate increase at the beginning of 2021, back on your percentage or even this chart, we'll see, but yeah, that one there says zero mat. Are you saying on this one, we would have a 15% in January 1 of 2022? Because we did talk about putting in our rate increase starting July 1. Or does that take an effect? And how much of a percent increase? How much did delaying any rate increases back in January 1, does that reflect? So when we made that decision, I've been waiting to have you on, on the TV show here to tell us how, how that actually affected our models in kicking the can a little farther down, six months down the road.
Kicking the can down the road, I think, has, has an effect that, that is, is less, it has the quantifiable effect that you're asking about. And I don't, I don't have that number. That, that would require a little archaeology. It has another effect that you may not be aware of and that I've only learned about since, since talking to the WIFIya underwriters. Learned a term that is used in credit reporting agencies called rate discipline. And it is one of the things that the WIFIya underwriter looks at, which is really an assessment of a city council's willingness to implement rate increases when they're needed. Which is, which is absolutely not what you're asking about, but, but it is one of the consequences of kicking, kicking the can down the road. Looking at this, we are, you know, a rate, a rate analysis is based upon a point in time looking forward. And so we knew that there was no rate increase in the previous year. What, what really counts for our purposes is we take the baseline year is, is essentially a year's worth of revenue at your current rates. And then a rate increase at the beginning of the next fiscal year is based upon that. So it's 15% above your current rates implemented at the beginning of the fiscal year. And so this would represent July 1st, 2021. 15% over your current rates will get you where you need to be.
Okay. So follow-up question. You made me a little nervous there by explaining something that you learned, something new about WIFIya. New term, it feels like there might be a discipline issue from WIFIya to city councils that may want to pause their rate increases along the way or change it. And have we hurt our WIFIya chances by putting in a pause in our rate increase?
No, not, not necessarily. I'm not, I'm not sure that, I'm not sure that that will even come up. But, but they do think about it. That is, that is part of the analysis of the credit. I see, I see Kevin Hanway popping up. I don't know if he wants to address that question as well.
I did want to say that, that is something that I'll talk about in my presentation. That concept of rate discipline and why it's important to the WIFIya underwriters.
Thank you. Councilor Walker.
I just had a quick question. So on this slide with the purple and then the next slide, so, so I'm looking at like 2031 is all of a sudden the purple goes way, way up with the new debt service. And then in the next slide, that's when we start growing the fund balances. And so is that because, you know, the next time we need to do some big improvement project, we, we don't have to kind of do the same kind of huge fundraising rate increases and all that so that we'll have- So that we'll have a balance of $30 million or something to kind of do whatever we need to do in 2040 is, is that kind of the difference between, I was looking at the slide, um, slide six and slide five.
Right. And I think what, what you're noticing here is the result of this slide. So all the projects are in the front half of the forecast period. And there are no, well, there, there's not significant cash outflows in the second half of the, of the forecast period. Which means that, that once you start paying your debt service, once that's gotten as large as it's going to get, you no longer need rate increases, but because of growth, your ability to fund capital will continue to grow. And that's why with a, with a lack of capital projects articulated and, and growing ability to fund capital, uh, you're going to have a growing balance if, if all of these assumptions hold true. Remember, we're talking about the 2.8% annual growth in your customer base. That's one of the assumptions. But also if you still 10 years from now, if you still don't have any projects you need to do out in this part of the forecast period, then yeah, it looks like your, your fund balance will begin to grow. That's a lot of ifs. All right. All right. See, no further questions. Thank you. Really appreciate your time this evening.
Our pleasure. Thank you.
Moving forward into old business, let's go.
Mayor, we got Kevin still.
Oh. All right.
Sorry, Mayor, Kevin Hanway.
As quick as I can.
Yeah.
Thank you.
My name is Kevin Hanway. This is my first opportunity to meet you. So good to meet you all. Consultant who's been brought on to work with the city and the other consultants on assembling the loan application to go to WIFIA. And, and Gabbard has just talked to you about the kinds of rate increases that are going to be required and how they're largely driven by debt service. And the, the purpose of my talk tonight is to talk about the WIFIA program and why it's a tool that helps you manage and mitigate those rate increases. And after I talk about those, the, the cost side, also want to spend a little bit of time talking about the underwriting aspect. You know, what EPA looks for, what its priorities are as it, as it reviews loan applications. So I've got a few slides to share with you. Here we go. Okay. So going to talk in terms of a typical wastewater capital project and how it's financed. And I want to make it clear at the start that what I'm talking about here is a generic project. And that the terms and comparisons are set up to show the differences between typical revenue bond financing and WIFIA financing. This does not plug in numbers from the rate model that, that Gabbard was telling you about. And, and it does not show the way that City of Sandy is planning to finance a project. It's, 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 it's an example to, to explain why WIFIA is, is helpful tool. For purposes of this example, uh, we're talking about a project that does cost $68 million. Would take on $61 million in debt. That would be funded by rate revenue and would take seven years to build. Whoops. On a typical infrastructure financing that would be funded by revenue bonds. And you see there that we're showing three serial, three bond issues over the course of time. And that's because the regulations that apply to revenue bonds put a limit on, on how long you have to spend that money. And so theoretically you might be able to do this with, with two revenue bonds. But for purposes of the example, we're saying you take out $61 million in revenue bonds over three issues. Each of those bonds has a 30 year repayment period. And the interest rate that we're told is, is current right now is around 4%. We're assuming that rate is going to continue to hold through the time when those bonds are issued. And then the way revenue bonds work is that once you issue the bond, you get a check for the full amount. And that you can start spending it, but you also have to start paying it back that first year. So you start principal and interest payments on the full amount starting that first year. WIFIA handles things differently. So on this project, WIFIA provides for maximum loan of 49% of the eligible costs. And in this case, that would be about $33 million, also a 30 year term. But the interest rates are much lower than on revenue bonds. And, and as of last week, the interest rates on that would have been applied to WIFIA loan was, was about 2.14% compared to the 4% we talked about for revenue bonds. Now, WIFIA covers 49% of the cost. That means the city needs to make up the rest of the cost. We're assuming that there would be one revenue bond issued in, in year four of the project for $28 million, again, a 30 year term and 4% interest on that. So it's easier to think of that in graphical terms. So here we talked to, talked about how you get, you'd have three different bond issuers. One, and in year one, you, you issue 25 million, you have three years to spend that. And start of year three, have another 25 million coming in. And the start of year six, 11 million to finish off your borrowing. Instead, soon as you get that $25 million, interest is accruing and you have to start paying your, your 30 year amortization, principal and interest costs. Three years later, you start that, that process on the second bond and notice three years on the third bond. So that in year one, you're paying interest and principal on 25 million dollars in bonds. By year six, you're paying principal and interest on the three month bonds, $61 million altogether. And each of them then gets paid off over their own 30 year period. One of the other things that makes WIFIA more most attractive is that instead of delivering all the funds at the start, WIFIA only disperses funds to you as you need them, as you spend them. That as you spend money on construction or other costs, each month you request reimbursement. And so what we're showing here is that $33 million loan is dispersed over time. So it's, it's, you're not, you're accruing interest from day one on any funds that are dispersed. But you don't have the full $33 million dispersed until year four. And, and then you have a $28 million slug that comes in. As I said before, the payments work differently. So we talked about the revenue bonds, I mean, in year one or year four, but the first year of that revenue bond, you're paying principal and interest on that full amount goes on for 30 years. One of the really attractive parts of the WIFIA program is that you can, as I said, interest accrues from the, the date that disbursements begin, but you're allowed to defer all enter, all payments until up to five years after substantial completion of construction. So remember, we said this was a seven year project. That means that you wouldn't have to start payment until year 12 on that $33 million. And what you, what you see then is that the, the payments on the $28 million revenue bond are going to be done some eight years under, under this example, you for the WIFIA bond is completed. So in addition, all this time you get your accruing interest at, at a lower rate and you get to defer payments on, on that amount. So what are the things that, that WIFIA is looking at? You know, this is kind of a recap here that you get great, great interest rates and flexible terms. You're re, you're only getting money as you need it. And, and you get that, that five year deferral after construction's completed. And what the model had shown last fall was that would save about $13 million for Sandy repairs in the first 15 years. The reminder on, on how we got to this point and Jordan Wheeler has been very careful all the way along to talk about how the city been invited to apply for the loan. That remember, this is a competitive process run by EPA. And so city submitted a letter of interest last fall. I led the team that put that together and EPA reviews those and scores them on a competitive basis and invites the top scoring projects to apply for a loan. They've got a high confidence that you're going to get a loan, but they still have to go through the review and, and underwriting process. And what they are looking at are what any lender looks at. That creditworthiness and readiness of the project. So for this project, it's going to take us much of the rest of the year to put the application together. And we'll be talking with EPA as we go along. But for EPA to get comfortable with the city to, and its ability to repay, just like any lender, they're going to look at cities creditworthiness. And so part of that is getting credit ratings and Piper Sandler, the, the city's financial advisor is going to be working on that. And the other thing that we'll look at is, is the city taking the steps that it needs, that it has control of to make sure that it will have the money to make those debt service payments. And that's the rate discipline that, that Doug Gabbard mentioned. And by rate discipline, all what it means is just if you see, if your rate model says you should be making annual rate increases at a certain percentage, they want to see that you're making those annual increases at that percentage. Or how, how are you going to handle it differently? They, they want, you know, we just, as much as they're trying to promote infrastructure and make things better for communities, in the end, they're a lender and they want to be sure they're going to be repaid. And so those are the things that we're working on as we put this application together are demonstrating cities ready to, to build, that it's going to meet industry standards on those projects and that it's prepared to follow through on meeting its commitments to charge rates and collect rates that will make their debt payments.
Kevin, quick question, I guess, just some process and maybe it's Jordan that answers this. But so if we get money from, I don't know, like the legislature that goes toward our wastewater treatment, I'm assuming it's like any loan where we just, we, we, we just, we pay it off early. Or I mean, how does that work just from a process standpoint with, with money that we get coming in that we don't necessarily plan for?
Well, let's see. I think I have to throw that to you, Jordan.
Yeah. I mean, in this case, we're just not take as much. I mean, they're going to, as we.
Once it's locked in though, is there a certain thing, once it's locked in now? Or is it pretty flexible?
I think it's flexible. I mean, it's part of, right, Kevin. I mean, it's, uh, there'll be a drawdown kind of schedule and, and you know, we'll be working closely with them as the project progresses on when we need that money. But there's other components to this, right? Like, you know, revenue bond coming up next year and an additional revenue bond, you know? So there's all those things that we can just, you know, we don't need that because we just got this nice state funding that, that came, or federal funding that came in.
Federal through the state, whatever.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Hi, I'm the financial advisor to the city. I'm on next, but it would ultimately depend on when those funds would come in. If you were still in the process of constructing, you could decide to borrow less. But all of the debt will have certain prepayment provisions. So you could potentially pay it off early. Some, sometimes there will be restrictions that'll all be outlined and negotiated with WIFIA once that loan agreement is entered into.
Great. Thank you. Any further questions before we move forward with the presentations?
Good. I'm good enough easy. Thank you. Good to meet you.
Thank you, Kevin. Appreciate your time this evening. All right, Jordan, what's next?
Okay. Thanks to Kevin. Just a final note on that. You know, kudos to the council. Thank you to both the council and then also, you know, our senators, Merkley and Wyden for supporting us in this. You know, uh, we were only, I think, of 54 cities in the small city to actually be invited for the WIFIA program. So it is a big deal for a city and you saw the, the millions of dollars in savings for that loan. So yes, continuing on the theme of wastewater and financing presentations tonight. Lauren sort of introduced herself there. She's our financial advisor from Piper Sandler, Lauren McMillan. She's going to be talking about the full faith and credit obligations.
Okay, perfect.
Yep. Tonight that are really for a multitude of projects, uh, street projects, and then actually wastewater with our collection system. So our private laterals, if you remember, the council adopted a policy to that as part of this project will be replacing the private laterals on private property of those sewer laterals. So that's a part of the full faith and credit obligation. And then a couple of street projects. One is our very high priority in council goal 362nd and Bell Street. So Lauren, I'll let, I'll hang it, hand it over to you to explain, you know, how this works, what these things are. It's a lot of education going on tonight. Apologize for all the presentations, but you know, we're, we're trying to lay the groundwork here for, you know, these projects to get going and then continue moving. So. Thanks. Go ahead, Lauren.
All right. Thanks, Jordan. I'm going to share my screen here. Okay, folks. Thanks for having me. Lots of good information here tonight. So again, I am the city's financial advisor. So I'm also working on the WIFIA loan and the, the other wastewater financings. But here to talk specifically about the full faith and credit obligation issue that the city is embarking on now. So, and actually just a little bit of background before I jump in there. I've been in public finance for almost 15 years and have actually been working with the city of Sandy since 2014. So worked on a couple of issues with the city, your telecommunications, revenue bonds and a refunding. And then urban renewal. So a pretty extensive history with the cities thus far and just building on that. So full faith and credit obligations, you'll probably hear us also abbreviate that as FFCO. This is a borrowing that is secured by the issuer's full faith and credit. That just means it's a unconditional pledge of all your legally available funds. So that generally ends up being your general fund, but it could potentially be other monies as well. But it just means that you kind of promise to investors that you'll do whatever you can to pay it back legally. Of course. So state law does not require voter, voter approval to issue this type of debt. But there is no additional revenue that's provided. You're going to be paying it out of additional sources. And so kind of the city has to examine that and make sure, you know, that it's affordable. There is no state limit on how much full faith and credit debt cities can issue. But Sandy's charter does have a provision that requires us to sell the debt subject to annual appropriation. Because otherwise you, the charter would require a vote to go around that. So that just means that the city needs to budget it every year. And essentially you could decide not to budget for debt service at some point. So it makes this debt a little bit riskier. It does come at a little bit of a cost compared to debt that is sold without this annual appropriation clause. And it does impact the city's credit rating, which we'll talk a little bit more about credit rating later on. The debt service can essentially be tailored as you'd like it, can to either track projected revenues or just more of a simple level debt service structure, which is what we're looking at currently. So municipalities are able to borrow on a tax exempt basis for certain qualifying projects. That means that the investors don't pay taxes on the interest income that they receive. So they're generally willing to accept lower rates. It's definitely a benefit and it's only offered to municipalities. But as you may imagine, that means there are some strings attached. So there is, there are certain federal tax rules that you have to comply with in order to get the tax exemption. So. So key provisions are restrictions on use of proceeds. Public purpose projects, that's a tongue twister. Those are okay. But there are limitations on partnerships with private entities and also nonprofits. There's also a restriction on reimbursement of past expenditures. You can only do that during a limited time period. And once you've established kind of intent for that reimbursement, usually with a resolution. Also restriction on the timing of when you spend the proceeds. Must have a reasonable expectation to spend the proceeds within three years of the borrowing date. And that includes any premium, bond premium that's generated. That's generally factored into kind of our structure to net how much you need for the project upfront. So as Jordan mentioned, the, this issue is looking to finance three different projects for the city. So the Bell 362nd extension, that is the largest component for about 5.4 million. The tax status there is tax exempt. There will be your, the registration fee, kind of some other fees outside of your general fund identified to actually pay the debt service. Though they are not pledged to repayment of the debt. In all three of these cases, we're looking at just 20-year level debt to a final maturity in 2041. Your average annual debt service on this piece is about 360,000 and change. The second project is the private laterals. So that is a wastewater project. For just timing reasons, it has found its way into this full faith and credit borrowing. You know, for a while, we were going back and forth, uncertain on timing for the wastewater revenue bond borrowing, but that timeframe has moved out a bit. And as I understand it, the private laterals work is scheduled to begin pretty soon. So we have included it in this borrowing to make sure the city has the funds available when they need it. This project is about 1.9 million, also tax exempt and identify your sewer revenues to pay it back. And again, both of those tax exempt projects have the same sort of borrowing structure and estimated interest rate at 2.87. This does include a cushion over current rates from when we ran numbers a few weeks ago. The last piece is the LED streetlight conversion project, just over 1.1 million. This project has been identified as needing to be sold taxable. Because I think most of the project has actually already been completed and that goes back to those federal restrictions on reimbursement. And so the city wasn't, wouldn't be able to borrow on a tax exempt basis and reimburse for this project. So you can see in the estimated interest rate column at the end there, since it's taxable, there is a little bit of a penalty on the interest rate there. But ultimately, we did kind of compare the borrowing costs and the, the impact on the annual debt service was actually fairly minimal. So your, your annual debt service there is just over 80,000 for that piece. And identified source of payment is energy savings and street fund revenues. So this loan will be prepayable beginning in 2031. That's very standard for publicly sold debt. Basically, you can begin paying it 10 years down the road with no penalty. Our funding plan is to solve the public offering. The city has sold debt this way in the past, back in 2014. The idea is to sell bonds in the public market to a variety of investors rather than just to one bank. Investors essentially get to pick which pieces of the bonds they would like most for their portfolio and it helps achieve the lowest borrowing cost. And of course, there's strings here. You're entering into a public market that is regulated by the SEC. We will need to prepare what's called an offering document or official statement that includes a lot of information about the city. Essentially, investors need to have access to all material information that they want to, they may want to consider before investing in the bonds. So a lot of information gets put into this document. Essentially, how your revenues are generated. In this case, since it's a full faith and credit pledge focuses on your general fund, the property tax system, items like that. Also has different demographic information. And, you know, Piper actually does help the city prepare the document and it's reviewed by other folks as well. But it's ultimately the city's document. And so the, the city is kind of responsible for the information that's included there about the city. Council will have an opportunity to review it. Once it's in a substantially final form, it will be circulated to council for you to review. It's not something that council needs to formally adopt. The only formal document adopted in connection with this borrowing will be the resolution. Entering the public market does require a credit rating. So a credit rating is just a third-party opinion of the city's credit quality. There are essentially three main agencies that really provide this. We work with two most often in Oregon, Moody's and S&amp;P. Especially going in the public market, it's, getting a good rating can help reduce your borrowing costs. And in some cases, it's really essential to get investors interested in the deal. The city does have an existing credit rating with S&amp;P. Double A minus, you can see the kind of rating scale over here. So triple A is the very best and there's no qualifiers there. But in the double A category, you can receive double A plus, double A or double A minus. And so the city is the double A minus on those existing telecommunications revenue bonds, which also have a full faith and credit pledge on them. And so really the security that was reviewed is the full faith and credit. And I mentioned that there is a penalty for the annual appropriation. So essentially, the double A minus includes that penalty. If the, the annual appropriation clause was not required, the city would be able to solve debt at a double A level. So it's essentially a one notch penalty for the annual appropriation. Just some background here on kind of what goes into the, the rating. S&amp;P's framework includes, you know, their institutional framework that's essentially looking at the state, kind of the statutory setup of revenues for the city. Looks at economy, management, different financial measures, you know, your liquidity, budgetary performance and flexibility, and then also debt. They kind of spit out in the indicative rating and then may make adjustments for certain things like taxpayer concentration. You know, say 50% of your tax base or your tax revenues comes from one entity. That's a negative. So they may adjust for that. But there's also positive adjustments that they may make as well, based on various criteria. Eventually, they will spit out a final rating and they will prepare a report that will be available for investors to review and kind of help them in their evaluation of the debt. So the last kind of piece to talk about here is the schedule. You know, we have our financing team, the folks that are really involved in this piece and city staff, Piper Sandler, that's us. The city's bond attorneys or in this case, special councils, Mercer and Shannon. They have worked with the city before, for a while as well. And then we'll also be hiring an underwriter upfront to help us actually market and sell the bonds. And so we're working through that and we'll have someone on board shortly. The kind of main items are outlined in the schedule here. Right now, we are working on development of that disclosure document, that preliminary official statement. As I stated, it's fairly extensive. So we do multiple drafts before this is finalized and circulated to the council and then eventually circulated to investors. So the schedule actually has us calling to send this to council pretty soon. We're looking at, I believe that's the end of this week, April 9th. And the city will have about, well, council will have about two weeks to review that document. And we'll provide sort of a brief statement as to kind of the process and what to look for. But next week, we're scheduled to start having some calls related to preparing for that credit rating process. And then also just doing a due diligence call where we review that official statement and go through some various questions to kind of make sure that we've covered all our bases in putting that document together. And then council is scheduled to adopt the authorizing resolution on the 19th. I think originally, we were looking at possibly having it at this meeting, but for, you know, you had a quite a crowded meeting. And so that was moved out to the 19th. And so we're just talking a little bit about that today and that'll, that official adoption will happen on the 19th. We're scheduled to receive our rating on the 23rd and then finalize and post that preliminary official statement document towards the end of the month on the 26th. And then actually market the bonds on the 6th of May. That's the date that the, the debt is actually sold, investors putting their orders for the debt. And that's when the interest rates are actually locked. And then from in between pricing and closing, there's a few more final documents to work out and sign. And then on the day of closing, identified as May 20th, that's the day that funds are actually wired to the city. And that is all I had for my presentation. Any questions?
I apologize, I was muted when I was calling for questions. Thank you so much for your presentation this evening. Is there any questions by council? Oh, I see councillor Pete's old.
Yeah, this question is probably for either Mike or Jordan. And that would be just on the 362nd Bell Street. And I've been, you know, promoting this for, I don't know, six, seven years in all the different places. But I was under the understanding it was 10 to 11 million and this is only saying five and a half million, which I'm pleasantly surprised if that's the accurate number. But I don't want to be caught short if it was supposed to be, you know, 10 to 11 million for that project.
That's what's in the TSP and that assumes that 362nd is extended all the way north to Kelsey Road. This portion of the project is about eight million, but we're spending about, we're spending $3 million in current cash out of the street fund for the engineering and design costs, about 1.8 million, 2 million for the right-of-way cost. So that's being funded. We're not borrowing money for that. We're funding that out of cash in the street fund, which is primarily STC revenue. And then the remainder for the construction costs will be with, that will be dead funded.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Walker.
Yeah, so the question for Lauren is, is if you change how you're going to pay back the money from being vehicle and gas tax money for, say, 362nd Bell, does that matter in, for all this? If you decide you're going to use some other pot of money?
It would just matter a bit now if, if it changes in terms of discussions, say with the rating agency and then the information that we present in that official statement. But since the, the only pledge of revenues is essentially the general fund, legally available revenues, you can switch it down the road. If for some reason those revenues went away, you would have something else legally available. You could use that to pay it instead.
Okay, well, just to kind of toe on the record for the rest of the councillors, I've just kind of been asking a bunch of questions because I guess we're using pretty much the balance of our road, street SDCs on the Bell 362nd planning, design and right-of-way acquisition. And then I guess also probably Gunderson Road is in there too. And so my concern, and that's, you know, totally appropriate. My concern though is that the use of vehicle registration and gas tax money, that money is something that we can use on any of our roads for all the road problems, the potholes, the whatever road problems we have, the sidewalks that we need in desperate areas and things like that. And so I guess what I'm going to go on the record is just that where we can not use those, where we can use SDCs or something similar to that for something like a Bell 362nd, I think we should and try to free up as much of our vehicle registration and gas tax money for more flexible things. And one of the things I kind of asked a bunch of questions about were, were two options. And one was a, and I got the words wrong in an email today, but an advanced reimbursement agreement where we can basically go ahead and get the project done. But then for any development out there, require an advanced reimbursement so that, so that if development happens out on 362nd and Bell, those developers would, would be kind of paying into a fund to help recover some of those costs. And the other option that we have here that's really kind of exciting because I think it's something that could even be used on parks, SDCs too, but I'll just focus on the street SDCs. And that is, and I don't know if I have to turn right, a reimbursement SDC. And, and so what creating a reimbursement SDC would do for us and, and other cities have these, is to be able to collect some money that, that can be then used to pay off these bonds things for a road that's already built for them. And so I guess, you know, those two approaches, an advanced reimbursement agreement or a reimbursement SDC is something I'd like us to kind of be talking about in the future going forward for, for Bell 362nd and possibly other projects that we see a need for. So thank you. It was very helpful to have all that explained, Lauren.
Thank you. And thank you so much, councillor. One thing to note is, is that those were options that were previously discussed by previous city councils when determining the fashion, that, you know, the way we are going to pay for the road. And there was, you know, several different reasons why we went the direction we did. But we should certainly talk about it and we're always open to better ways of doing things. All right, any further questions? All right. Well, thank you so much, Lauren, for your presentation this evening. It was very informative and yeah, I'm sure we'll, we'll see you around here really soon. We're doing a lot of projects right now.
You are, and good luck with everything. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you. All right, moving forward in new business resolution, I mean, in old business still, I had a resolution 2021-05 authorizing loan for the Clean Water State Revolving Loan Fund.
Um, yeah, this is a, this is the enabling resolution that would authorize the city manager to sign the loan agreement with the Department of Environmental Equality for a state revolving fund construction loan. The city did this for the planning loan that we use to finance the facilities plan, some of the additional work on the, the additional studies for the wastewater system. And so the council, some members of the council have seen this in the past. This would be for the construction loan. The amount in the resolution is $5,675,000 at a 20-year term. And the annual interest rate is 1.22%. So, you know, in context of the full faith and credit interest rates that Lauren was sharing with us, you know, this is a very attractive loan program. It's even better than the assumes WIFIA financing. The only, with your financing, as Kevin explained, is you don't have to, you can delay the first payment until five years after the project is complete. You can't do that with SRF funding. And the term can be a little longer with WIFIA financing than with SRF funding. So that kind of explains the difference in the interest rates. But this is a very attractive rate. I don't know if Tyler can help us on what we're getting with our money at the pool. It's probably not over one percent, but I guess about where inflation is still. This is a really good number. And, you know, as we discussed in the staff report, the actual cost for these projects is going to be, actually, this is a number at eight point eight five million in the staff report. It looks like we'll get the G M P tomorrow on the election system project, and we are using an estimate for the wastewater treatment project, but it looks like that's going to be closer to twelve to twelve and a half million. And E Q has preliminarily indicated that they will be able to amend this loan once the city enters into the agreement, and we will be able to take advantage of this same one point two-two percent interest rate for amendments to the loan. So that's all good news. Budget costs have gone up, but we still can keep this attractive financing. So the, the first payment wouldn't be due until August twenty of twenty twenty-two, and that's currently plugged into the budget that the council will be reviewing over the next couple of budget meetings. And so the staff recommendation is to approve Resolution twenty twenty-one dash oh five authorizing the city manager to sign the loan.
Thank you, Mike. Appreciate it. Are there any questions for Mike? All right, I, I can also enter, oh, councillor Walker.
So is this eight or twelve billion dollars included in the huge numbers we heard earlier? That sixty-eight to eighty-something million, or is this on top of that?
No, this is included. I think they had a special purpose loan or special purpose fund loan in the great model that F C S group presented. It did fifteen million in there. But that includes some other projects that would be in later phases. So this, yes, this is dialed into the policy you saw earlier.
Thank you.
There's no other questions? We can entertain a motion?
Make a motion that we approve Resolution two thousand twenty-one dash zero five to enter into a loan agreement with the E Q.
There's a motion by councillor Pete Gold and a second by councillor Exner. All those in favor signify by saying aye or provide me a thumbs up. Aye, oppose, a nay, or a thumbs down? Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to new business advisory bodies, bodies governance and structure. It's boring. Shouldn't it be advisory boards, governance and structure?
Well, Jeff's going to talk a little bit about terminology, so.
All right, educate me.
Jeff, go ahead and take it away. Thanks.
Okay, okay. I, I'm sorry, I have some slides. They'll be very fast. I know we've had a lot of slides tonight. This is going to be very brief. We'll just blow right through it. But it'll just help kind of provide some, some structure. So just a little bit of background for why we're here. As you know, we've been dealing over the past year with just kind of cleaning up the policies around our boards and, and commissions. We had an issue where we've been operating with some boards that didn't have established terms. They may not have had bylaws. There was not clarity on whether public meetings law applies. We had a governance document that was an administrative policy and not adopted through resolution, so we've been trying to clean that up. Over the past year, we've done some of that. We established terms for the planning commission, Parks and Trails Board, Arts Commission, Library Boards. This was all during twenty twenty. Most recent one was the Transit Advisory Board. And so where we are now in phase two is we, we'd like to replace that old administrative policy with an actual council resolution laying out how different bodies should be governed or, or kind of the, the structure in terms of what's the expectation for terms and bylaws and things like that. What are the different, what should be the different bodies in terms of, you know, what's the difference between a task force, an advisory board, a subcommittee? There really hasn't been a lot of clarity, so wanting to provide some structure to that. There are, there's some cleanup to do in terms of some existing boards that we still have that lack governing or enacting resolutions or lacked bylaws. And then there are a couple of new bodies that actually do need to be created still. So as you see in the packet, we've got a new board governance resolution that would replace the old administrative policy that was adopted in twenty eighteen. It would apply to all bodies unless specifically stated. Think, you know, establishing consistency to the four-year staggered group terms that we've been doing recently. Vacancy procedures in terms of interview panels. Again, we've been doing this, but just actually adopting a resolution that would, you know, require this process. By what needs to be in bylaws that these bodies operate by, adhering to the code of conduct, et cetera. And so.
Hold on, I apologize. I want a short presentation as much as the next person. Wait, so instead of just putting this into our council rules, we're going to, we're going to put this in statute or something?
Council resolution is, so not a, not an actual ordinance. This is the way it was, it was previously. We had resolutions for things like this. Or I may be wrong about that. Perhaps Jordan can correct me on that, but it is common to, to have a resolution for, for these types of things. Of course, council rules are adopted by resolution as well, so it's sort of the same level of authority. But just to have consistency and, and, and that clarity, I think is the idea.
Okay, but so just to be clear though, because one thing I, I do like to be careful about is, is providing handcuffs to future councils. I, I think it's very important to allow elected leaders beyond us, you know, to have flexibility to govern in the way in which they see fit. So if they want to change, if a future council wants to change their process for filling these board positions, they're going to have to amend a resolution before they move forward, or what are they going to have to do?
Yeah, I suppose that, yeah, I think the answer to that question is yes. Now, the, the, you know, the whole interview process thing, as we'll get to in a minute, applies to some of the, the higher level. We lay out a structure that you can see in the, in the agenda packet where you've got your planning commission, you've got your, you know, actual advisory boards where it's very kind of formal, but then you have these informal bodies that don't necessarily, necessarily require that sort of a process. So it's not as if we're, we're trying to establish that every single task force or subcommittee requires an interview panel and that sort of thing. That, that wouldn't be realistic. But, you know, to answer your question in terms of like for an actual, the planning commission or an advisory board, yeah, they would technically need to, you know, amend the resolution, which they certainly could do.
But they would have to do, they'd have to amend their rules too anyways, whether we place it as a rules or a resolution. I mean, the process is different, but the time is about the same to do it.
That's correct. It would have to be done in a public meeting. So, yeah, that's, the time would, would be the same.
Okay, thank you, Jeff. Appreciate it.
Absolutely. The second attachment, just moving on to the kind of framework that we've laid out here that kind of lays out a hierarchy, for lack of a better word, of, of different bodies here. The second attachment or exhibit in the staff report is, is kind of a table. I didn't try to, I didn't want to try to squish the table into a PowerPoint because that just wasn't going to be useful. But you can, you can see that it's sort of, it's a compare and contrast of these different levels of groups. So we have at the top, we have statutory bodies. These are things that are actually laid out in Oregon law. Things like planning commission, budget committee, they have a high degree, or they have some independent decision-making authority established through ordinance. Then the next level down is advisory boards. These are formal bodies. They have public meetings law applies. We'll talk about that in a second. That's an important consideration. They make a formal recommendation back to the council, and that's why the public meetings law does apply. Established through council resolution. That's been our practice, so it would just be kind of, you know, formalizing that. Then there's this third level, which is sort of a, kind of a flexible level, this task force idea. So this would be a group that operates on a limited time scale for a specific purpose. They don't, they generally, as we envision it, wouldn't have bylaws unless they wanted to for some reason. Publics meeting, public meetings law wouldn't necessarily apply. They're just established through a council motion during a meeting. Again, that's sort of what we've been doing anyway. But that's that middle level. And then on the next slide here, we have these two other kind of lower groups where, and I don't mean lower as in less important, but just more informal. City council subcommittees. So this is different from a task force. A task force, as we envision it, is you can have a variety of people on there. You know, perhaps you have some community members. Perhaps you might even have a staff member, but a city council subcommittee is supposed to be a subcommittee of the council formed to attack or, or deal with a certain issue, bring a recommendation back to the full group. Again, public meetings law isn't designed to apply to that sort of a thing. And then finally, we have this last group, project advisory committees. And we have these, this is more of a staff-driven thing where we know that we, we need to have a group of people advising a project. So the city manager would, would put together a group like this to provide feedback and input on city projects or initiatives. So again, you could have a variety of people on a group like that. So just really quickly, a word on public meetings. So the idea is the more formal groups would have to abide by Oregon public meetings law, and that's a good thing. You don't necessarily want to have, you know, advertised public meetings with minutes and everything like that for a, an informal task force. Or I think about the, the group that managed the public polling effort for the, for the recreation district a year ago. That wouldn't make sense to make that a, an advertised public meetings with minutes. And so the reason I bring this up especially is because there's a, there's a pretty significant staff time consideration for if you bring something up to the level of public meetings, you're going to have a lot of overhead time in terms of the minutes and agenda prep and things like that. So that, that's the second item here, was just kind of dealing with this structure of how these different levels of, of groups could work. And then the last thing is we have some existing groups that, that need a little bit of council action. And so you can see right here, the Sandy Net Advisory Board, it was, it is an official board. It was, we have a, we have a resolution that established it or reestablished it probably in twenty eighteen. But it doesn't have bylaws. It doesn't have members currently recruited in its current iteration. We also have an arts group, which we've, we're proposing to reform as the Arts Advisory Board per council's direction. That needs a resolution, it needs bylaws, it needs members. We have the Economic Development Group. We are proposing to, to rename it the Economic Development Advisory Board, bringing it up to that same kind of level of authority as the other advisory boards that we have. That does have members, as you know, but it doesn't have a resolution or bylaws. And then the last thing, which I know councillor Hockinson may want to offer a few words on, is this community campus and aquatics effort that has begun. One of the questions is what sort of group should that be, or will there need to be a group? Is, is that an advisory board? Is it a task force? That's it, and I'll leave, I'll leave it to those councillors to address that question.
Well, one question, Jeff, on the Arts Advisory Board. Have, and I, maybe we've done this, I just don't remember. Have we gotten rid of our Arts Advisory Commission?
We haven't yet. I'm going, I'm going to get to that in just a second. One of the things in the packet you'll see is a draft ordinance. It's maybe the, maybe the shortest ordinance I've seen that would repeal Title eighteen. And then there would be, which is the section of the municipal code that established the Arts Commission. So you would repeal that and then adopt a resolution establishing the Arts Advisory Board. Does that answer your question, Mayor?
Yeah, totally. Thank you.
The bylaws, we didn't need to go into great detail on this. Major components of bylaws are a purpose statement. I do think that is pretty important for some of these groups kind of laying out what is, what are you supposed to be doing? What's your kind of purview, membership requirements? We've talked about residency requirements. So you'll see some of those in the draft, in the packet, you have draft bylaws for the Sandy Net Board and the Arts Board meetings, officer elections, things like that. So, so what's in front of you today? Three things. We have a number of draft documents in the packet for your consideration, and if you have question or discussion tonight, we have resolutions. First of all, we have that kind of policy resolution that would replace the old administrative policy that we, that we've been sort of trying to work with. We have this board framework that I laid out the five different levels. And then we have all the draft bylaws and resolutions. All of this is in the packet for your consideration. So there's that. The other thing I think it makes a lot of sense to move forward with tonight, if the council agrees, is designating people to serve on interview panels, because we need to get the Arts Advisory Board spun up. We need to get the Sandy Net Advisory Board going again. And then the final thing is, I know that councillor Hockinson wants to say a few words about the community campus and aquatics. So that, that's what's in front of us tonight. So I will, I will take down my slides. We've had way too many slides tonight. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions or comments? Councillor Hockinson?
Hey, thanks, Mayor. Can I suggest we take the, these in those three orders that Jeff had, that we limit our discussion initially on the, the, the draft resolution first?
Yeah.
Okay. Then I do have some comments on, on that, if, if minor ones, Jeff, if you're ready to take notes. But section four dot one's got a typo in bodes for should be boards. Under section five, when we're talking about our bylaws, you spend a lot of time talking about public records and public, public meetings, minutes, records and those sort of things, but it didn't really make its way into here. So I'm wondering if it, we need to actually call out explicitly where those things are required, since this, this may well become that document that every, the only document that people look to to understand, you know, the different rules around the types of groups. Because if, if we're obligated to do, keep records and so forth, we just want to make sure whoever's chairing a board or a committee or a task force, whatever, knows what their obligation is.
Appreciate that feedback.
I don't have a specific suggestion there, other than I think it's a topic that needs to get added. Under section seven, it says the mayor will designate a non-voting city council liaison to each board. Board in this context could mean anything. When we have subcommittees, that would imply, well, in theory, we're not voting there in a subcommittee anyway, but it doesn't make sense in the context of some of the areas. So I think that should be a may. And I would suggest maybe seven dot two, where the city manager designates a non-voting staff liaison. That maybe should be a may as well, so that we have some flexibility there. The table that's included is referenced as appendix A, but lacks a label, so we need to label it. And under project advisory committees, it says the members are appointed by the city manager. I would put a city manager or mayor because that would be consistent with how the mayor assigned things this last term. And then under city council subcommittees, it says up to three councillors. And in the other cases where you use that, use the words avoid quorum, I would add that there as well. Thank you.
Thank you for that feedback, and I, I've been taking notes, so thank you.
Any other questions or comments regarding the first, the first point there on governance? Councillor Exner?
Oh, I took it off. More than just, I appreciate what Don said. I know there's been some talk about how some of the voting happens. I can see for, you guys are voting quite often. Other places we're not, so, but anyway, I, he got all my balls for my issues on it, so, good job, Don.
Thank you. Councillor Walker?
Hi, I want to thank Jeff for putting all this together. It really kind of helps organize our, our boards going forward. And the thing that I would add to this is that for the Arts, Arts Commission, I'm, I'm excited to hear about that. The, the criteria for board members, it, it says that they should be artists and performing artists and this kind of thing. I'm not sure I necessarily agree with that. I mean, we don't have playground builders and trail construction crew folks on our parks board. I think it's okay to say, you know, people who are interested in arts. And the reason I say that is because I really want our, we have some fantastic local artists, as we all know, in our town. And I want to make sure that we are able to employ them or provide them grants to do artwork in our town. or provide them grants to do artwork in our town. But I do have a concern about them being on the board and us then turning around and giving grants to them. And so two things on that aspect is, one is that, you know, again, changing it to be folks that are interested in the arts. And then the second one is under that Code of Conduct and stuff, just including some kind of mention that city grants would not be available to board members. If we get some other extra money from Travel Oregon or something like that, that's a different story. But at least city money would not be, that would, I guess, be a conflict of interest to me. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councillor Pete Sol?
Yeah, I was looking there, down at the very bottom, the last page. Well, I guess it goes back and forth. It goes Appendix A, Appendix B, Appendix A again in the document. So I'm not sure if that's a...
There are multiple resolutions. So I know it gets a little bit confusing there.
That's fine. On the Sandy Net one, on the last page there, Article 2, the purpose of it, scopes offered by Sandy, the city's municipal fiber utility. I would change the word from fiber utility to telecommunications, because the way the communications work is, I mean, we use all different things besides fiber, copper, wireless, anything that may be invented in two years or 10 years from now. So I would just change it from municipal telecommunications utility versus a fiber utility. That's all I had.
Thank you. Councillor Smollett?
Yeah, let me drop my hand down, so I don't get yelled at later. Yeah, just to Kathleen's point, you know, I want to consider, if we have somebody on a board that, I'll use Parks as an example. Just because they're on a board doesn't mean that they shouldn't be able to bid, go through a bid process for a job or go through a bid process for a grant if they're an artist. Because all of that still comes back to council for a decision. And it's a, it shouldn't be a competitive process. So for me, I don't have a problem. Again, these are our community members. They are volunteers in our community. I do not have a problem with a board member who wants to do something for the city, whether it's pay up. I've got a company I'd like to put in a playground and/or whatnot, that should disqualify them. So I do have some consternation with limiting access to our public and the ability to do something for the city.
Quite honestly, to me, it just feels like a topic we could cover on another evening. I mean, I just don't understand the need to get into the weeds on this particular topic at 9:58 at night. So I say this before. Any other questions or comments on the governance part? Before we go to the next? Okay. So on the next issue, it's not up here in front of me. So it's getting late.
The next issue was identifying who would want to serve on an interview panel for both the Arts Group and also the Sandy Net Group.
And what do we need? We need two or three? We need three.
We need three.
Right, so start with art. So Carl's on there. Who else wants to be on there? Lori wants to be on there. We need a third. Kathleen had her hand up first. Sorry, Rich, gonna miss out on this.
I'll wave to Rich. Rich can do it.
I'm happy to. I was just trying to keep it moving. I'm happy to help, but it doesn't matter. If Kathleen wants to, I'm totally in fine with that as well.
All right, cool. Let's go with Kathleen on this one. And then what's the next one?
Yeah, there is the Sandy Net.
Sandy Net, so Jeremy's on that one. Rich is going to be on that one. And Don's going to be on. Don, Don, you voted against a darn program to start with. You want back at this again?
I never voted against Sandy Net. I just had some issues with funding. I like Sandy Net. I love my fiber, Jeremy, don't take my fiber away, okay?
That's right.
Thank you. No, thank you for that. And staff will reach out in terms of the logistics for that.
Awesome. And then, Don, did you have some comments on the Sandy Community Campus and Aquatic Advisory Board?
You know, I'd love to take that another night, if it's okay with you, Mayor.
I think it's okay. I'm okay with that. All right, thank you. Any other comments on this topic, Jeff? You feeling good?
Was just gonna say, yeah, I appreciate everybody's feedback. Incorporate those edits. We'll be bringing back a number of resolutions. I guess it's like three or four. And an ordinance to get all this done at the next meeting, but hopefully it'll go pretty smoothly. So thank you.
Let's all try to review that beforehand, so we can put it on the consent agenda, please. And appreciate that. All right, so moving forward. Councillor Exner, Bee City USA discussion.
Why do you do this to me?
Carl, this better be quick.
Boy, I tell you.
You're already out of time.
Really quickly, this one was brought up a lot because of some discussions we had in the past couple of months, or maybe a month or so. That has a lot to do with biodiversity, one of the goals of the city council. And part of a discussion that Shelley Dennison and I had about some of the things that are really important in a city to make sure that we do show that we are a biodiverse city as well as we have the Tree City designation. That's very similar and actually could be combined. A lot of activities that are there. And quite frankly, just a little bit of communication with some of the city people. We got a lot of interest in this piece of work. It's something that I wouldn't even have put on to a council business if it didn't mean, there's a little bit of a financial cost. And I hate to even talk about finances at this time of night, but it's very, very small. A few hundred dollars, I think $200 or $300 is all for a membership fee a year. So there's a little bit of money involved. But Shelley, if you want to go quickly through your conversation and then at the very end, we'll talk about what we want.
Yeah, I'm going to make this super brief. I made slides, but I don't think anybody wants to see them, so I'm not going to use them. So as councillor Exner said, we're interested in bringing the issue of becoming a bee city to city council. So just a little bit of background. When we think about pollinators, we usually think about honeybees. But there are all kinds of different pollinator species. There are butterflies, moths, hummingbirds. Oregon alone is home to over 500 native bee species. And pollinators serve a lot of really important purposes. They promote healthy food systems. The statistic that people like to use, like the Xerces Society, is that one out of every three bites of food that we eat are because of pollinators. They support environmental quality and actually economic growth. But there's a massive decline in pollinator species. Some of the studies that I read found that there are 25% fewer bee species that were observed between 2006 and 2015 than there were before in 1990. Another one that I actually just read today, they do counts of monarch butterflies along the California coast. And there are 99.9% fewer monarch butterflies in 2021 than there were in 1980. And this loss of pollinator species is due to a number of factors, specifically habitat loss and pesticide use. But this is a really good example of the principle of thinking globally and acting locally, right? There's things as a city that we can do to support pollinator species. Things like codifying the importance of native plant species, using integrated pest management practices, which is a fancy way of saying best practices for pest management that don't hurt pollinator species. Policy support, public outreach and education, providing resources to the public, and then also becoming a Bee City USA affiliate, which, as councillor Exner said, is very similar to Tree City USA, but specifically about pollinator species. So there are 11 affiliate cities in Oregon, including a few in Clackamas County. West Lynn and Wilsonville are both bee cities. There's a few requirements. I won't go through all of them, but one of them is having a committee. As councillor Exner said, we've gotten a lot of interest from different organizations, different residents in Sandy who are interested in being part of this committee, adopting an integrated pest management plan, codifying some policy, a council resolution signifying Sandy as a bee city. And then there's a $200 annual fee. And what that fee pays for is access to expert support and resources about conservation. So helping us write that integrated pest management plan or helping us come up with ideas for what, you know, potentially that pollinator-friendly policy could look like. And then, as councillor Exner said, this ties right into one of the biennium goals for city council, which is enhancing biodiversity in the city. And, you know, for me, this kind of, I get really excited about this. And it kind of goes beyond just like a professional interest to something that I'm really personally passionate about. I actually have a tattoo of a honeybee. So I'm really into pollinator species. And I think this would be a great opportunity for Sandy to be a leader in Clackamas County, to really support community building and meet that biodiversity goal that's part of city council. So that was about five minutes. I hope that wasn't too long.
It was good, Shelley. And anything that involves a tattoo of a, is awesome. All right.
Just to finish it up, what we're asking for is, because it does have a little bit of money to it, and I would love to be able to see the mayor be able to put together a proclamation. See, it's May 20th is the National World Bee Day. And I'd kind of like to kick it off at that, something like that. Maybe do that at a council meeting someplace close to that and be able to kick it off at that point. That's kind of where we're here tonight, is kind of see if we can't get council support for that. And with that?
Okay. Awesome. I'm just gonna say, three hands up, you guys. All right, Councillor Smollett?
Yeah, I just want to say, can we just vote on this and pass this? Because we know we're not voting against this, right? Right? We're gonna do this. Can we?
Do we have to review our pesticide policy that we just voted on earlier now?
You know, Don, yeah. We may have to come back to that. But anyway, that's all, I was just gonna make a motion.
It's good for now, though.
That we move forward with this.
A second.
That's fine, Kathleen. I can take amendments and stuff. So we have a motion on the floor, and we have a second. We're open for discussion. Councillor Walker?
Yeah, I think it's a great idea. I think my concern is that we have another committee. And I think that we just adopted an integrated pest management plan, which is a big part of what the Parks Department is doing. I think that this whole thing belongs in the Parks Board. And they're the ones to kind of, you know, work with you, Shelley, or whoever the staff is that wants to kind of do this. It's a great thing, it's a white hat thing. But I really, you know, when we talk about, you know, who's going to do it and committees and all that, I think it's, we've already got the Parks Board. We've already got them. They are the ones that worked on the Integrated Pest Management Plan. They're the ones, you know, and if people want to get involved with it, you know, bee folks in the town to kind of work with the Parks Board to enhance it, great.
Yeah, we did have conversations with Don Robertson and Sarah Richardson about this. So yeah, definitely, we want to have the Parks Board. You know, we want to get them involved.
I think they should be taking the lead on it with, rather than having a separate committee.
Well, this could easily be run much like the Tree City thing. Just let them deal with it as, like a staff person like Shelley has got a lot of interest in it.
We got a motion, Councillor Pete Sol?
Yeah, I think that can be figured out later at night. I just want to say, because it's at the end of the agenda, the late at night. Shelley, thank you for the amazing slides. You put a lot of work into that. And so I just want to shout that out, because I think you spent, I don't know, an hour or more, and we didn't spend any time on your beautiful slides. So thank you for putting those in there. I enjoyed them. So I'm just giving you the time now for that. And the fact that you went and got a tattoo of it is even better. So anyways, I will progress forward with what was already seconded, so.
Perfect. All right, we got a motion on the floor and a second. All those in favor, signify by say and aye or provide me a thumbs up. Aye, opposed, and nay, or a thumbs down? All right, motion carries. Let's go, city manager report.
Thank you, Mayor. Some news. Tony Richardson sent out a note to council. She'll be leaving the city June 1st. She has a great opportunity in California. Going to move back closer to her family. And also just a great career opportunity as an assistant parks director there for San Luis Obispo County. So congratulations to her. Always hate to lose staff, but we're happy for her and her move. But we do have her for a couple more months, so you'll see her around. She'll take us through the first part of the budget process. Mayor, the left turn permitted on red sign is here. It's been delivered today, and will be going up soon, so.
Nah, I may want to... Yes, I may want to socially distance, mask-wearing. I'll take on whatever restrictions you want to give me, but I want to get those big scissors out for that, so.
Okay. All right, I'll ask Ryan on the timeline, I'm getting that up.
That's gonna be awesome. Pete Sol, you're gonna be there.
And then just thank you for the quick response on the kind of flurry of activity Thursday, Friday, with the American Rescue Plan Act funding, brainstorming. We'll see where this goes. Thank you to the state for throwing that at us at the last minute. But staff scrambled. I think we got some great ideas. And we'll see what's next, cross our fingers that maybe we'll get a little share of that. Comfort Structures update. There's three contractors that are bidding on La Happy. I think they're due Wednesday, the bids. San Landia is out for bid today. And then Red Shed plans are coming in this week. And then we'll go out to bid after that. So, you know, those are moving along. I think Red Shed has a tenant improvement project that's going on, that's out to bid right now, too. So still a lot going on with that. And yeah, that's it. Thanks.
Awesome. Thank you. Kathleen? Councillor Walker? We're on the, I'm sorry, we're on the councillor committee reports.
The library board has not met since I've been assigned to it yet. I believe they're planning to meet. They postponed the meeting in March, and they're planning to meet sometime in April. Is this when I also talk about other things? Or just the committee assignment?
Yep, go ahead.
We have that SOLV cleanup coming up. I don't mean to steal anybody's thunder if they're going to talk about it, but I wanted to do another cleanup of homeless camps down in Sandy River Park. But I do need Chief Roberts to have somebody go down there and kind of do a pre-sweep of the homeless camps and if there's needing to be postings or notifications or what have you to make that a viable site that we include in the SOLV cleanup. And then lastly, I'm excited, I'm going to meet with Shelley and staff on the comp plan stuff tomorrow. I do want to make sure that, you know, I'm pleased that we're doing comp plan stuff and talking about bees and all that, but I am concerned that we are, there's some real high priority planning development code amendments that need to kind of close some loopholes. And I'm going to keep, you know, I don't mean to be a broken record here, but we've got some pretty glaring issues that need to be taken care of. And I'm hoping that that gets put on the agenda to get fixed here pretty quick. Because those are much more, those are real short-term urgent things. So I'm excited to see us make some progress on those pretty quick. Thank you.
Thank you. Carl, Councillor Exner?
You caught me by surprise. I couldn't get to the mute button. There's several things I want to talk about. But mostly, I just want to say one thing is that, as a realtor, there are five houses for sale, five total, in 97055 at this point. We need to do something about our affordability that is driving up houses' prices so much. I won't say any more details than just very coarsely, but I made an offer for a client this afternoon here in Sandy. There were 16 other offers on that one piece of property, because there are so few houses for sale in Sandy right now. It's really getting to become a real affordability problem. People are bidding $30,000, $40,000, $50,000 above listed prices. It's really becoming an issue. We need more listings, but we need more additional housing, so. Pretty interesting. We need more listings, but we need more additional housing. So, pretty interesting. I noticed, though, that the, uh, lots right in front of the Mount Hood Athletic Club got, went to pending. I really feel comfortable about that. Everybody's wondering what that is. And I am also trying to figure that out, too, but I'm glad to see they went pending. Things going on in the city. We're really busy, but, um, I sure like to see some more housing. So, I'm gonna leave it at that.
Sounds good. Um, Counselor Sheldon?
I, I don't have much tonight. Um, I would like to put it on the radar, though, for a work session to have that session with the planning commission. And just get a chance to listen to what they have to say and the issues that they have. And that, some of that even might go to what Kathleen had to say there just a moment ago. And to Carl's point as well. So, um, I think they have some real good valuable insight to offer. It'd be a good chance for us to listen. That's all I have.
I like it. Thanks, Rich. Uh, Counselor Hockenson?
Thanks. Um, I think our committee on the aquatics is probably shaping up to be a task force, which was kind of the question Jeff was kind of asking earlier. And, and we'll probably want to come back and have a broader topic on that. But as far as this meeting, we continue to meet. We try every week. Uh, we did a sub, Carl and I did a site walk around a couple of weeks ago. Uh, it was very good just to get out there and get off Zoom and go see things again and from a different perspective. And I think our vision's expanding. So, so that's good. I also want to just give a shout out to Jeff. The website is really coming along and I appreciate you continuing to add things and, and make better links and make it more usable and and encourage everybody to, whenever you look for something and you can't find it, send Jeff a no because that's a clue to him to add a different link or a way to get to it. So, thanks.
Thank you. Um, let's go, Counselor Smollett.
All right, real quick. Uh, hey, Jordan, are we talking, uh, water options next meeting? Is that, is that on the agenda for the nineteenth?
That's on for actually May, uh, seventh, I think it's the seventeenth, the second meeting in May.
Second meeting in May.
Yeah.
Can you, uh, can you give me a confirmation of that? So, um, I've met with, uh, uh, both, um, the Cottrell CPO and then, uh, Commissioner Shaw this week regarding the filtration plant. So, we'll discuss that in that meeting and some of that information. But Commissioner Shaw and his staff wanted to be invited to that meeting. So, if we can make sure that, that we get that done.
Okay, thank you.
And then, uh, I was at, uh, C four this week and, uh, they really didn't talk about anything having to do with East County. Everything was, was metro related. So, really nothing to report. I know Carl's laughing. Nothing to report. So, that, that's all I got.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. Uh, Counselor Pete Sol?
Yeah, I spent like eight, nine years going to C four. It's kind of frustrating sometimes when, uh, they don't talk to me about anything you're doing. Um, just want to, uh, call out that, uh, saw some emails come across last minute, uh, tourism grants. Um, and David was able to get that in. And so, we applied for a, a tourism, um, grant with Travel Oregon, uh, for, uh, John's rude, uh, viewpoint live cams, which has been on the list. And Kathleen has been lobbying for that as well as I have for a long time. So, that was on the last, on the list of doing that, uh, for some of the restrictions that were there. Got that in, um, as well. Um, the economic committee meeting will be, uh, this week. And so, we'll be meeting on that. But that's all I got.
Thank you. Uh, for my report, just want to start with just recognition for a tragedy commissioner, uh, planning commissioner Chris Maitan's family. Just a fantastic servant for this community and our, our thoughts and prayers are with him and his family as they go through this time. Um, I wanted to make a comment just on our role as counselors. It's come up just a couple of times, you know, let's just make sure we're really, you know, serving in kind of our, you know, our board capacity, um, with, with staff and and, and trying to not get too far into the weeds of day-to-day direction of staff and of the work that they, they do so well every day. Great discussion on homelessness. Really appreciate all the presentation, the work that our team put together for that, for us as council. I think that's the beginning of kind of longer conversation, uh, but really appreciated everybody's time in that and research going in. That, that was obvious tonight for that. Um, I want to let everybody know, I, I got an email from Counselor Exner. I, I always appreciate him looking out for me on the State of the City address. Uh, that will be coming up on April fourteenth, uh, with the chamber. That's gonna be a, uh, at noon. And it, it is gonna be virtual this year. Um, unfortunately, we do have, uh, too little meeting spaces that have the capacity and stuff to be able to uh, to continue on with many of the restrictions, but that, uh, we're looking to do that on April fourteenth. We do have, uh, as Ben mentioned, we have a lot of stimulus money coming into Sandy right now. We're talking around two point three million. Uh, there was some discussion last week, this last week on some opportunity with money that's gonna be going out from the state. And then, of course, there's a major, uh, national infrastructure package being talked about, uh, right now on the federal level, which uh, includes traditional infrastructure, but, uh, obviously being hotly debated is kind of some of the non-traditional infrastructure. But, but one thing on that note, to sustain our nonpartisan roles, you know, you give us some money, we, we'll, we will spend it, we'll spend it, you know, correctly and right. Um, is there is childcare, um, opportunities that are being talked about in that. And to a conversation I have with Counselor Hockenson, I don't know, maybe a week or two ago, you know, those kinds of funds fit very well into a multi-generational type, um, center. So, uh, very exciting times as far as, uh, possibly having some funds come in our community and and not too often as counselors, uh, of small communities like Sandy, do we have such an opportunity? So, to really get to the edge of your seats and get ready and excited to tackle this, this is one of the more fun things we'll, we'll get to do as, as counselors that will have a lasting effect, uh, on our community. Uh, but while we're doing that, while it's fun and exciting to think about some of the more kind of attractive projects. On the heels of two thousand and twenty, I, I did just want to point to emergency preparedness. Uh, we do have a possible Cascadia quake that we sit in the zone in. Um, I think a lot of things were highlighted, uh, as far as like even in the winter freeze and the lack of generators. You know, with where we sit as Sandy and kind of, you know, geographically. You know, I would like to put a little bit more thought into emergency preparedness. If we have a little bit, if we have some funds coming into our community, uh, let's be thoughtful about that because, you know, you, you sure don't like to think about using that, but when the time comes, you know, you're, you're rewarded pretty handsomely for those, those early investments. Uh, and then thank you for, uh, the update on the, the cover structure program. Um, Jordan, I think that just continues to be a, a great opportunity here, uh, for Sandy. With that, we all just go to bed. Uh, oh, you had a comment, Counselor Walker?
Sorry, I, I shouldn't have gone first. Yeah, I do, um, the grant for the, um, live cam. I want to just thank Greg Brewster's, uh, work on putting the cost together for that. Um, but the other thing is that there is an opportunity for another grant coming up, um, a, a letter due April thirtieth, letter of intent due for the Recreation Trails Program Grant, which is a lot of money. And you put in your letter of intent by April thirtieth, you put in your grant by June fifteenth, you find out like, by Christmas or so, whether you got the funds and you get the money for next year. I would hate to see us miss that opportunity to go after that money for something like the community campus trails because it's gonna be another two years before they ask you if you want any money again. So, I just wanted to kind of put that out there and hope, hope that we, uh, dial for those dollars. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor. And with that, I'll go ahead and adjourn the C means meeting. Thank you, everybody. Appreciate it.
Hey, everyone.
Night.